Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the December 5th City Council Meeting. I'd like to motion to leave the public and to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And we do have somebody on Zoom. I think so we will.
We're waiting for him to come on.
Oh, can we do an all in favor if he's not here yet? Or no? Better wait. There's a rule that we have to do roll call votes when they have a member joining from Zoom, so. The rule of the chair is that if he's not on, all right.
He's not.
Okay, we will. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lori, will you please call the roll?
I will do that. Mayor McKeckren.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councilor Tabor.
Here.
Councilor Denton.
Here.
Councilor Moreau.
Here.
Councilor Bagley.
Here.
Councilor Lombardi, not yet. Councilor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Cook.
Here.
At this point, eight present.
Okay, well, we will.
I'll let you know as soon as he shows up.
You know. For the invocation, I would just like folks to acknowledge and remember Kip Newcomb, uncle to Councilor Rich Blaylock, passed away, recently leaves behind his kids, Michael, Jan, and Chrissy, grandkids, Kyla and Max. He loved to visit Portsmouth, and as Rich said, on his motorcycle, he could fix anything, build anything, and drive anything, sounds like a good dude, and he will be missed. So a moment of silence for Kip. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the acceptance of minutes for September 19th, October 3rd, October 17th. Guys have been busy. I'd like to motion to approve and accept the minutes of the September 19th, 2022, October 3rd, 2022, and October 17th, 2022, City Council meetings.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
In his presence, with us yet? Okay.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have the Recognition and Volunteer Committee reports.
Assistant Mayor wanted to make a motion.
Thank you. Your Honor, I would make a motion that we move up the presentation for the COVID bounce back and the Portsmouth 400th presentation.
Second.
Did you say we'd suspend the rules?
Oh, I'm sorry. We suspend the rules and bring those forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Okay. All right, we have first the, where are these?
Page three.
Oh. Do you normally number these? Is this you doing the number? The, all right. Who do we have to speak on the COVID Response Task Force?
Your Honor, we have Lori Walts and I believe Whitney Brown.
Floor is yours.
Wow, it was so fast. Good evening, Council, Mayor, everyone. I don't know the proper protocol.
Just saying hi and saying your name and why you're here.
I was hoping somebody else was going to go before me so that I would like get the queue up on that. So my name is Lori Walts. I am the Executive Director of Leadership Seacoast and also a member of the COVID Response Task Force Blue Ribbon Committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My counterpart, Whitney Brown, will also be speaking and we'll let her introduce herself when she's up. Okay. When I'm ready for the slide to advance, can I just, you're, okay. Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
So the COVID Response Task Force Blue Ribbon Committee, that I'm going to refer to as Task Force this evening, was created to identify and evaluate the challenges that the pandemic had on our community and to identify low-cost, high-impact recovery solutions that the ARPA funding could be used for. What we'll be sharing this evening is an update on our process and ultimately a request for an additional six months to continue our work. I'll expand more on the request to the Council at the end of the presentation. Could you please advance this slide? The task force began meeting in July. The members represent the nonprofit sector, the youth of the city, and the community at large. Next slide. To better understand the challenges that the community is facing as a result of COVID, the task force invited subject matter experts to share their perspectives with us. Hearing directly from these individuals helped us realize that the challenges being faced impact the overall public health of the community and informed our next steps. Next slide. The task force identified six specific critical areas of need: transportation, mental health, workforce shortage, lack of childcare options, lack of housing options, and substance misuse. As we listened to the stories shared, we quickly found that no one issue or area of need is siloed. Each of these areas of need are interconnected to one another, and it will take thoughtful and multi-pronged approaches to implement solutions. The task force also recognized that these areas of critical need aren't new. The issues that are present today were present in years past, long before COVID. What we now know is that a pandemic like COVID exacerbates these issues. Once the critical areas of need were determined, we identified and applied a consistent and systematic strategy. We began with four questions: what's the problem? What's the impact on public health? What are the potential solutions? And what agencies and organizations are already providing services in the area of need? Next slide. The first critical area that we identified was transportation, and I'll note that these aren't in any particular order. Public transportation is an essential component of a healthy community, and lack of access to public transportation disproportionately harms those who rely on it, including the unhoused, older adults, and individuals with disabilities. Lack of transportation also leads to social isolation and declining health outcomes. So what is the problem? Adequate public transportation does not exist in Portsmouth. Some of the reasons for this challenge are a lack of workforce, CDL certification is expensive, there is a wage inequity between public transportation and for-profit organizations. So if someone has a CDL license and they are offered a job at Coast or offered a job to work for Amazon, they're likely going to work for Amazon because they're going to receive a higher wage. Even though the hours are longer and the burnout is higher, they're still likely to opt for a higher wage. The impact on public health: the residents in Portsmouth that rely on public transportation for access to medical care, food, and employment are unable to access these basic needs. Next slide. Some potential solutions to this problem: we could provide subsidies for CDL certification. We could consider taxi vouchers. I know that the town of Exeter worked to implement taxi vouchers through one of the departments of the city so that the people that were in need of transportation could receive either discounted or free rides. We can explore the option of city-owned fleet of non-CDL vehicles. I know that that comes with some challenges. And we can look to nonprofits to collaborate in order to fill the transportation gap. We'd also consider developing a marketing campaign to encourage retirees to help fill the gap. We know that there are some agencies already involved in this work, and those agencies include Coast, Wildcat Transit, Task, taxis, and various nonprofits. And I just want to note that I know that some of the solutions that are potentially early on identified in this category include some insurance liabilities that would have to be considered, and we know that we'll have to do additional research on that. Next slide. Public, excuse me, mental health was the next area of concern. Access to mental health is an indicator of public health. Unaddressed mental health issues can have a negative effect on homelessness, poverty, employment safety, and the local economy. What is the problem? There are several barriers to accessing mental health care that include: lack of mental health providers, insurance coverage that is inadequate, lack of transportation. Since the pandemic, telehealth has served as an option for some but not all. Many noted a need for increased services, some lost services altogether, and families have noted an increased need. The impact on public health: when access to adequate mental health care is unavailable and increased need for services is the result. More people may experience depression, begin misusing substances, experience suicidality, resulting in a less productive workforce and more poverty. Many ultimately turn to the emergency room when their need for care is acute and there are not enough facilities to care for them. Some potential solutions include supporting and creating safe spaces as an alternative solution for after-school. I want to note that when we were considering these critical areas of need, we looked at it through the lens of both young adults or students as well as adults in our community. Additional solutions include allowing interns to bill for services, which would increase the number of providers. We recognize that that is really more of a state issue, not a local issue to the city of Portsmouth, but perhaps we could consider identifying funds to help support lobbying for that. Providing incentives to build the workforce in this field, which is a long-term solution, not necessarily something that would be achievable in the short term. Identify telehealth options for providers that don't currently offer it. Support and promote EAP services. Fund existing agencies to deliver targeted programs. Support coordination of care programs for those in need. The agencies that are already working in this area are nearly every nonprofit in the local Seacoast region, but I will list many of them as I know that maybe some of you don't know about them. Seacoast Mental Health, Seacoast Women's Giving Circle, NAMI, YMCA, the Greater Seacoast Community Health, Granite Pathways, Connections Peer Support, Greater Portsmouth Youth Wellness Coalition, Little League, the Portsmouth Rec Department, Arts in Reach, Easter Seals, Portsmouth Housing Authority, the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, Soul Models, Haven, and many more. And I will make a note that the Seacoast Women's Giving Circle has identified mental health as their area of focus for their grant-making this season, and there could be an opportunity, if the city were to act quickly, to maybe provide funds to that organization or maybe match a need because they're already existing and as an organization, they receive requests for funding, they vet the organizations, they vet the projects, and then reward the funding. So it would be, I think, perhaps something easy to achieve, low-cost, high-impact. Next slide. Workforce shortage is the next area of need that we identified. A healthy workforce is critical for a healthy and balanced community. A community must provide housing options, childcare options, and reliable public transportation in order to sustain a balanced workforce. And I'm guessing that by now you all see that these issues are all very interconnected. One cannot exist without the other. What is the problem with our workforce shortage? There is a lack of affordable housing options and inventory. There are few landlords participating in the HUD voucher program. There are limited childcare options. There is a lack of reliable transportation. There are limited training opportunities for those that would like to be in the workforce. The impact on public health is employee burnout and turnover. So employees that are already in the workforce, particularly in high-service areas, are overworked and burnt out. There is a disruption of services when we don't have enough workforce. So an example being Coast had to stop some of their routes because they didn't have enough drivers. There's an increased reliance on welfare and other services. There aren't enough people that can afford to live in Portsmouth to work in Portsmouth. Next slide. Potential solutions include providing more housing options, developing relationships with the Portsmouth High School CTE programs and community colleges, to encourage more young workers to work, stay, live in the community. Engage retirees with social responsibility and influence over some of our younger members of the community. Support training programs. Perhaps consider CDL licensed scholarships or scholarships for early childhood education to get more workers in those specific fields. Agencies that are already working in this area include Portsmouth High School CTE, the Workforce Housing Coalition, apprenticeship programs at community colleges, recovery-friendly workplace initiatives, New Hampshire Housing, Portsmouth Housing Authority, and Safe Harbor Recovery. I'm going to turn it over to Whitney to cover the last three areas of critical need. Good evening, Council members. My name is Whitney Brown. I'm the Director of Safe Harbor Recovery Center of Granite Pathways, and I'm also a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee COVID Relief Task Force. So just continuing on here, lack of childcare is another critical area of need. Families are unable to find childcare or any options for children under six years old. This includes the lack of Head Start in the Portsmouth area. The childcare problem is tied to the workforce problem, as there are not enough childcare employees, competitive wages, or accessible trainings. The result is that more women are left out of the workforce and family mental health impacted negatively. With higher caregiver stress, children are at risk for neglect and abuse or ample social, emotional connection or recreation opportunities. Please advance slide. Some solutions include city subsidized childcare for employers, increasing the number of workplaces that offer on-site childcare. The city could provide partnerships with the high school CTE program in early childhood education and Seacoast community schools and other childcare agencies. Another solution for the city is to create a paid position to coordinate childcare, after-school, and mental health programs for the youth. Examples of other area agencies would include community colleges, the Recreation Department, and the School District. Please advance slide. Housing: in Portsmouth, there is a huge lack of affordable housing for individuals making less than $48,000 a year. One reason is the lack of landlords who participate in subsidized housing programs. The impact is more unhoused individuals and families, a large decrease in the workforce, an increase in mental health and substance use issues. Please advance slide. Possible solutions include property developers interested in housing vulnerable populations and education programs for these developers and landlords about housing choice vouchers and supporting temporary rental assistance and the Portsmouth Housing Authority. Agencies could include Seacoast Housing Coalition, Home for All, Portsmouth Housing Authority, et cetera. Please advance slide. Substance misuse continues to be a huge problem, especially with COVID and how it exacerbated the entire problem. Individuals are dying of drug-related overdose, and there's a lack of treatment options available. These problems cause orphaned children and cause, in the family system, stress, grief, and other social-emotional effects that can increase risk of neglect of children in these households. Not only are families stressed and strained, but support systems and service agencies are strained. Many individuals returned to youth, meaning relapsed, during the COVID pandemic and its isolation. Mental health of infants, children, and adults are impacted from substance misuse, potentially increasing adverse childhood experiences known as ACEs. Please advance slide. Some solutions are supporting prevention and education of caregivers and community members about ACEs and to fund programs that serve families and youth impacted by substance use. Examples of these agencies involved in these efforts are Pine Tree Institute, Seacoast Mental Health, Safe Harbor Recovery Center, Haven, and more. And shall we hand it back off to Lori? So I'm sure, hopefully, after hearing a summary of the critical areas of need, you've identified that, like I said before, no one particular area of need is siloed, they're all interconnected. Any decision made to fund one area will support another area. However, the challenge becomes then, how do we ensure that we are not duplicating efforts and that we are spending the money wisely and efficiently? The task force is committed to identifying low-cost and high-impact opportunities for the ARPA funds to be expended. Other considerations that the task force is including in our conversations include areas for collaboration among nonprofits and other agencies, solutions that are sustainable, and projects that are equitable and address the needs of all. One area that we're considering as a recommendation is considering dedicating One area that we're considering as a recommendation is considering dedicating an amount of funding for the Health Department, which is currently conducting a community health profile and needs assessment. What we anticipate happening is that the data will be collected, and it will support the findings that we already have. We also would like to consider exploring the possibility of partnering with established grant-making organizations or other entities that have the infrastructure in place to receive requests for funding, vet the request, and then award the funding. And I know that a lot of this is going to rely on the council's expertise in decision-making, but that is one area that this task force is really committed to looking at, is now that there's this bucket of money, how do we get it out of that bucket to the people that can use the money? My brain's going faster than my mouth. We also think it's really important that we consider marketing for these funding opportunities. How do we make sure that all of the nonprofits and agencies in the community know that this funding is available and that they can request for it? That they could put forth a project to be able to receive that funding? We also would like to consider supporting the Community Resource Network, also known as CRN, to make their website user-friendly. This is this fantastic resource of organizations within the community that are already doing really good work, but it's so antiquated, you literally have to print out, like, I don't know, 90-page document that has information about each of the organizations, what they do, what their mission is, how to contact them, but there is nothing electronically available to sort, to find, to access those organizations. We also believe it's really important to continue the public conversations about the areas of need for Portsmouth to build resiliency for our community for the long term. One theme that has come up for me personally, as I've been engaged on this task force, and I thank you for the opportunity to be in this position, is that this community is only as strong as its weakest link. And what has also become very apparent is that the nonprofit sector is the group, the sector, the field, that is supporting the most vulnerable. And I think it's a real opportunity to step back, look at how funding is made available to these nonprofits that are doing the work, the direct service providers that are the ones with the boots on the ground doing the work. They know best how to spend this money. And identifying how we get from A to Z is still something that we're not sure of as a task force. So our request to the council is that we have an additional six months to continue to meet and explore the options that are available and solutions that we could then come back and propose to you in a detailed recommendation. And if we can get it done more quickly than six months, we will do so. Do you all have any questions for me or anyone? I would like to say that Kathy Beebe and Abby, I'm sorry, I don't know you're listening, Frank, are also here representing the task force.
Thanks so much for coming, Laura. Is there, oh, Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Honor. And first, I just want to thank all the members of the task force for all their volunteer hours serving and taking on this quite challenging problem. And maybe give a shout out to Abby Frank, who runs the Sunwise Squad at Little Harbor, because that was kind of the genesis of this idea of put the task force together to define those high-impact, low-cost solutions. And then I've watched all your meetings. You've had a great list of guests come in and kind of identify problems in the community, many of which seem to fall under the radar, particularly ones like transportation, where a lot of our nonprofits don't particularly address that issue because that's not part of their mission. But without transportation, they can't effectively do their mission. You know, for instance, mental health, people have to be able to get to that appointment, but it's not really the mental health provider's mission to provide the transportation to the appointment. So I think you guys have done a great job of identifying a lot of the issues and the cracks, and I think you've done excellent work in coming up with potential solutions. So I guess if I could, I'd make a motion, if that's the right way to do it, that we extend the task force for another six months.
Second.
Yep, second. Any discussion? Is Vince on here yet?
He is not.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vince will not be joining.
Okay. Vince will not be. Okay. Next up, the next presentation was the Portsmouth 400th update.
Welcome, Valerie.
Thank you, Mayor, Assistant Mayor, Councilors, CD Manager, Attorney Morell. I'm Valerie Rochon, and I'm with the Portsmouth NH400th, Inc. And we are responsible, along with the city, for putting on the next year full of events. And I will try to go through this as quickly as I can, but I will tell you that we have more than 100 events. I'm not going to go through them all. But anybody who wants to follow along, portsmouthnh400.org, you can see the list right there on our website if anybody has their phones out, and you can follow along. Thank you. So we're doing 400 years, although we're also focusing on the last 50 years, rather than, you know, history is history, and the 350 years before this have really been done. But a lot has changed in the last 50 years, so really focusing on that. But we also are being respectful of the fact that we've only been here 400 years, and there were many people who were here for 12,000 years before, so we're being very respectful of that. It's December right now to the end of next year. So it's already started, and it's throughout Portsmouth, and Dover, Ryan, Newcastle are also celebrating their 400th anniversaries. Who? You, everyone. We want everyone involved in this because that's how it's going to be fun. Residents, businesses, and visitors. And that's the timeline that we're focused on, the past, present, and the future. Thank you. So it's already beginning. We did the holiday parade the other night. There's Trevor, our marketing guru. First night is coming up, and they were good enough to include Portsmouth NH400 in their logo this year, which we were very excited about. And then you've got the champagne pops coming up, and they are dedicating it to the 400th as well. So the fun has already begun. Here's the big thing for us coming up, January 6th. And look it, if you write out 1623, what does that spell? 1623, whoo, pretty cool. So that's our big night. And we, yeah, we sort of went, we realized that one. That's our big night. So we hope to have the community together at Prescott Park. We hope to have someone flip the switch to turn the lights on, the blue lights on on the bridge. And then we'll walk to the South Church, and we're going to have a little reveal party. So if you would go to the next, please. Those are the glow sticks I've literally ordered. We're all going to get some, so come out and join us. And we do have the Set the House on Fire Gospel Choir that's going to give us a little preview of what they're going to be doing. That's our very first event on January 16th, MLK Day. They're going to join us. That's not them, that's a stock photo. The, in February, we have the .05K Run at Strawberry Bank Museum. And we also have the opening of the 101 Objects Speaker Series. And the Bard Bash actually opens in this time. The Bard Bash is Shakespeare's, in 1623, is also the publication of Shakespeare's First Folio. So they're going to do 12 venues, 36 plays throughout the year, starting in January. So January, February, March, every month. It's going to be amazing. Next slide, please. April to May. So we have worked with the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. They're going to be doing tours on a monthly basis through the summer. Usually you don't get to do those tours, but they are going to be doing them. There's some restrictions obviously involved with them. The big Keeping History Above Water Conference, this is the ninth annual Keeping History Above Water. The eighth was in Norfolk, Virginia. Stephanie was able to get it to come to Portsmouth for us. So this is a big deal, talking about climate change. We also have Earth Day in there. The sustainability folks are going to be doing some events on that day. And that's the day, that's the month that Hidden Neighborhoods of Portsmouth Tours begin, where Portsmouth Bike Tours is going to take you through the neighborhoods on their bicycles and talk about the different history in different parts of the neighborhood. So that's pretty cool. Yes, please. So we have a parade, another one coming up. The Grand Parade is one of our signature events, and that's going to be in June. In June, we also have Juneteenth, and again, around, well, obviously around Juneteenth, but they're planning, they have been planning a gospel, reggae, spiritual, and jazz, music and education festival. I want tickets like now. So, I mean, it just sounds fantastic. The Pride Parade is also in June, and we have a vintage baseball game, Portsmouth versus Dover. Dover's t-shirts are navy. Portsmouth for NH for their 400th, Portsmouth are white. Everybody needs to buy them, so we have the navy and the white sitting in the stands for a vintage-friendly baseball game. July, we have a masquerade ball fundraiser for the Little Italy Carnival, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, but we want it to be free for all. We want it to be a free community day, so we are having a fundraiser then. The tall ships are coming back, more ships are coming in, there's going to be more parties going on. It's going to be a bigger and bigger event, a bigger and better event. And we're even, one of our local fishermen is actually recreating or bringing back the tradition of the blessing of the fleet. So I'm not sure exactly how he's going to do that with the tall ships, but we're pretty excited about bringing back an old tradition. And then, then and now, the Portsmouth Athenaeum is going to be blowing up some big posters of what the businesses in the buildings, mostly in downtown, looked like years ago, like that's Alley Jewelers right there, and putting them in those businesses so you can see what it looks like today and what it looked like historically. So very excited, and that goes through the summer. Yes, please. Street Life 400. So one community, 400 years, one dinner. This is another signature event. This is a collaboration between P&amp;H400 and The Chamber. 750 of our best friends are going to be having dinner on one white linen tablecloth, long table, from Market Square to Jumpin' Jays. Foster's is doing the whole clambake, typical clambake, and we're going to have some entertainment that I think will blow your socks off. So we're very excited about that. We also have the Little Italy Carnival. This is the free event that we're trying to do in honor of the lost Italian neighborhoods. Boston Business, Boston Circus Guild has already been contracted to come up and perform, so we're very excited about that one. Those are two of our signature events in August. And then, historically speaking, Whipple Day, William Whipple Day, is coming up at the Moffett Ladd House. Yes, please. Big doings in September, the Bi-Park Fest, you might recognize that lady. So bigger, better, more expanded, moving out of Vida Cantina, I think. The parking lot might be too small. It was amazing this year, it's going to be even more amazing next year for the 400th. There's also an air show, Thunder Over New Hampshire, but it's going to be Heritage in the Air, so it's going to be about old, well, old and flying airplanes. And you can even purchase rides in some of them, apparently. So if you're into old airplanes, you can buy a ride. So we're excited about the air show coming back. We have a Lantern Festival. This is put on by Alliance for Greater Good, and it's celebrating the 400 years of the kindness of the people in Portsmouth, the city of the open door. So that's going to be, I think, on the pond right out here. And, yes, please. October, Westival. So the Westival is going to feature Irish and English immigrants is what they're going to be focused on. It's also the end, it's been going all summer, of the last monthly diplomats of Portsmouth, focused on the 1713 and the 1905 peace treaties. So this is where I could fit it in, but it's been going on since May. And, of course, we have the Halloween Parade, which is going to be all about the 400th. And you can see Denise and Trevor are already in gear and ready for this past Halloween Parade, so it's going to be super. Yes, please. In November, oh my goodness, this is so amazing. The Music Hall has asked the PSO, the Portsmouth Symphony Orchestra, to commission a brand-new piece. It's never been played before, it's just been developed. That will be performed for the very first time by the PSO with Portsmouth Pro Musica at the Music Hall in November. Unbelievable, that's going to be quite an experience. And then we are also doing the People of the Donland Story Fest at Strawberry Bank during, again, being respectful of the people who came before us. Yes, please. So December once again rolls around, Strawberry Bank's Candlelight Stroll, 400 years of winter celebrations. Can be very specific about the 400th anniversary. The last of the Bard Bash in December is going to be, what is it? I can't read it now. If anybody else can, those are the three, all's well that ends well. There you go, King Lear and something else.
Richard III.
It's going to happen for the Bard Bash in December. And Jim Splain and his group that's putting together the Time Castle is going to bury it on December 31st. I have no idea where. Yes, please. But he's going to have to know that so he can find it again. Legacy projects, we have a few legacy projects. We are working on a sculpture garden in Bohanville Gateway Park. We already have about $80,000 raised for that, so hopefully have a real, very cool piece that people will see as they come into our gateway. The History of Portsmouth and 101 Objects book is already out, and if you missed the author's signing evening, it was a great event with, I don't know, 50 or so of these authors, all in one room, these historians, all in one room. When does that ever happen? And then Dennis Robson is working on two projects. One is dedicated towards more the middle school, maybe freshman year, and it's a time machine. It's an illustrated comic book sort of thing. He's working on with Bob Squire, and that will be out in the middle of next year, and so will his 1623 book, in which he debunks a lot of the things that we have called history. So he's going to tell us all about that. Yes, please. Marketing, yeah, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on in marketing. But one thing I will say that we need is we are working on the commemorative book that will come out, the 400th commemorative book that will come out. And what's really important to us is to have stories from our local people, 400-word essays. And so you'll see that in Seacoast Media Group's going to be posting more about that. We've been posting it out on Facebook. We really need people's stories. So if you know somebody who's got a story, and you can help them do a 400-word essay, or even just bullet and send it to stories@stories.pnh400@gmail.com, and we would love to include them in our book. And if we go to the next page, I think it's just more visual, thank you. So on the left-hand side, you're seeing our banners that are going to be hung up probably the end of this week, beginning of next week. Thank you, DPW, thank you, Karen. On the left are the banners that will be downtown. Those will be fairly small because we can't, for lots of reasons, they're going to be fairly small, so for pedestrians. But the larger ones are going to be in the Market Street Gateway area. Those are going to be like three feet by five feet, so they're going to be visible. And then we'll look for other places around town in gateways that we can actually hang some as well. So you can see our rack card, you can see our window clings and buttons that we have now, and you can see the email header, and that last piece on the bottom right is what we're using for most of our outreach now. Thank you. Merchandise, yes, we have merchandise. The license plates are specifically for 2023, so you can put them on your car on January 1st, you have to take them off on December 31st, but you can put them on the front of your car, and we do have permission from the state to do this. So the state police, the local police departments have all been, DMV have all been notified that you can have that plate on the front of your car. So don't be afraid to put it on there. My husband got excited about it and put mine on, don't tell anybody. So if I get a ticket, I'll tell you how much they cost. Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry, can I just go back to that for a second? The calendar. The calendars, the 2023 calendars are coming out probably within the next week, so they'll be ready for Christmas, perfect Christmas holiday gift, so please, pre-buy them on our, on our website. That's that PortsmouthNH400.org thing that, if you're following along, that's where it is. So fundraising, we have about $200,000 cash on hand and another at least $230 pledged, and most of that invoiced. Our Seacoast Half Marathon brought in about $70,000. The Little Italy Carnival raffle so far have bought, brought in just over 22. The Legacy, as I said, has brought in 80. We are, we are tomorrow actually doing out a, a big email to residents, we'll follow up with one to businesses. And we have the 400 Scholes Club and the 1623 Club that we are inviting people to join, and with our giving, on Giving Tuesday, we actually did have a number of people sign up for that, so we were pretty excited about it. We need people, we need our community to help us, support us either financially, or join a committee, or come out and volunteer, PortsmouthNH400.org, if I haven't said that already. Yes, please. Thank you. To our sponsors, our donors, our board of directors, our executive team, our management team, all of our volunteers, and certainly to the city council for allocating some dollars to us and for the support that you're giving us. And if you have any questions, I am happy to take them.
Thank you, Valerie.
How did I do? Did I do less than 10 minutes or not?
About less than 10, but we got it pretty good.
Okay.
Time well spent. Any questions from the council? That was pretty exhaustive, thank you for all the work, look forward to kicking it off December 30th, well, already getting the license plate going, but...
Get the license plates, shh, don't tell anybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valerie.
Your Honor, do I modify, suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules to bring up my item?
Sure. Second.
We'd just like to bring up, favor.
Aye.
Just to give an update on the skate park fundraising, I'd like to invite up Chair Amy May Court, if I could. Average study.
Hello, everybody. Mr. Mayor, city council people, and city officials, thanks for having us. I would love us to be part of Portsmouth 400 and to cut that ribbon on our 400th year, I'm just going to put that in there. So Rich and I are here today, tonight, to give you a brief, brief synopsis about our fundraising efforts for the skate park lights to date, but before we do that, we wanted to publicly thank a couple of people. We brought with us tonight two people who have been key players in making the magic happen on the Skate Park Committee. Despite the fact that they aren't members of the committee, they show up to almost every single meeting with passion and the will to help where and whenever they are needed. The first person is Sean McDonald, who's sitting over there. Sean McDonald is a native to the area, and he is the owner of Rocket Fuel Only Screen Printing here in Portsmouth. He has donated his skills and time in the form of design work and screen printing, screen printing for various projects we've worked on. You might recognize him as the guy who had the mobile screen printing cart at the 3S Flip the Switch fundraiser, where he printed one-of-a-kind posters of his design and donated all of the money he received to the city of Portsmouth for the skate park lights.
Thanks, Sean.
Yes, thank you. He also helped us win the Best Community Entry Trophy at the, at the Holiday Parade, which was such a shock. He rode with us on Saturday night, it was super fun. We didn't get as many riders because of the rain, and you can't really ride a skateboard in the rain, it ruins the decks, but Sean wasn't worried about that, he rode his skateboard. So like I said, there's rarely a meeting that he isn't at, and we think Sean is just the man, so thank you, Sean. Person number two is Anna Nuttall, who we all know as the middle school art teacher, she's sitting back there, and she's also the head of the department, but did you know that she has a great passion for skateboarding? You probably did. She's been an advocate for skateboarders and skate parks in this community for years now, and she's worked tirelessly with us, coming up with fundraising ideas and other community awareness events. We hope to work on an art fundraiser soon. She lent her artistic heart and mind to our Flip the Switch fundraising event, making it truly beautiful. We love Anna. Thank you, Anna. So I wanted to do this because Sean and Anna are not members of the Portsmouth community, they, Sean owns a business, Anna works at the middle school, but they don't live in Portsmouth, so they can't officially be on the committee, and so I think it was really, I thought it was really important, and so did Rich, that we tell all you guys about them and, and give them public props. So thanks, guys, so much. So one more thing before I pass the mic to Rich, we've organized a teen Battle of the Bands that I'm really, really excited about, that's going to take place at the community campus on June 13th. This will raise just a little bit of money for skate park lights, but it's more of an outreach event to give local teen musicians a venue to play for their peers. I would love for everybody to encourage their teens in their life, their neighbors, their children, to go to this event. They might not even know what a Battle of the Bands is, we all do because we're older, but I don't think they've had them in the community for a while, so just tell them that it's like a dance but with live bands. And we'll have refreshments, and we'll be raffling off snowboards and other great items, so we look forward to that. And now for Rich.
Thank you. Good evening. The committee has deposited approximately $25,000 from donations and fundraising into the city accounts so far. We've made an effort to raise funds but to also keep the skateboard pack in front of the community, in front of the papers, things like that, so that we keep the momentum and the excitement going through the community until we cut the ribbon. The committee will be moving forward to increase donations by reaching out to both local businesses and area, well, I was going to say local businesses, for different types of sponsorships. We're in the early stages of discussing engraved bricks, walkway, much like you see down at the Memorial Bridge. People will be able to sponsor a brick with their personal message. Also, we have a number of other fundraising ideas that are in the early stages. Before I sit down, I'd like to at least acknowledge Portsmouth Rec. When we were at Fun Fest with our booth, tremendous amount of people came up and were very excited about the little intro or beginners skateboarding classes that the rec held. And I'd say the majority wanted to know how they're going to hold anymore. So that was a great success, and we're teaching younger kids through the rec to learn to skateboard. So it's all going to fall in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Thanks, Amy May. Any questions? No? Just thank you so much for coming, appreciate it, and to Anna and Sean, great job, thanks for all the hard work you do. Cheers, guys. All right. With that, we are on to public comment, I believe, yep, public comment. First up, Paige Trace, topic of Mactar.
Your Honor? I just want to let all the public presenters know that they're not required to stay, they're more than welcome to stay, but we'll probably have a long meeting tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. Members of the city council, in full disclosure, I was a member of the McIntyre Subcommittee, along with Mayor McCackern and Councilor Tabor and past Chairman Whalen. And since that time long ago, you've had numerous updates from the city manager. On June, you had a responsibility matrix. In October, you had supposedly the draft form of the development agreement. The city manager's updates are, we meet every Tuesday morning, there are subcommittees, and we're on schedule. Scattered darkness interrupted by scattered light. And you were moving along on schedule until you aren't. But this was recently identified by the Portsmouth Herald. You see, that's my problem. You have regular updates from the city manager, and yet I get the Herald to get the transparent, necessary questions asked and answered. None of you have been asking the hard questions, pretty much ever, about McIntyre, ever. The city manager works for you, and her updates, I listen to them all, are vague, very vague, and late at night. Why is it not important? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a large, massive, complicated project, and you ask no public questions at city council meetings. Why? Were you told not to? You work for the residents of Portsmouth. We would like to know what's going on, and we would like to hear it from you. You represent our interests. You are, have been there for us in so much, but not exactly this. Is this your idea of leadership? Please try to take a little more interest for all our sakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, Roy Helsel, on the topic of electric meters.
Good evening, Roy Helsel, 777 Middle Road. The electric car metering, I keep reading about the city is talking about installing them, only I hope these meters will, will charge as the car owners like the parking meters are, and not the city paying for the use, because nobody pays for the gas that I use driving my car. Oh, and I thought when the city agreed to pay the large sum of monies to Redgate Kane that we were done with the partnership, and we go with the developer that agreed to do the kind of development the majority of the citizens wanted with the open green spaces and not those ugly monster buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Next up, Petra on the topic of committee membership, or Petra Huda on the topic of committee membership.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. My topic tonight is committee membership. In reviewing the applications being brought forward tonight for this and other committees recently, compliance to Article 4, Committees and Authorities, Section 1401, Portsmouth has a residency requirement, and this has, this was put in place in 1997. Eligibility to, for appointment to commissions and authorities for the city of Portsmouth shall be limited to residents of the city of Portsmouth. Any individual who is a resident of Portsmouth at the time of appointment to the commission or authority shall be ineligible to remain on that commission in the event that the individual shall discontinue residence at the city of Portsmouth. In reviewing tonight, again, we have applicants that are not city residents. I ask you to comply with our laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up, Rick Becksteh with Reminder.
Good evening. Rick Becksteh, 1395 Islington Street, excuse the voice, I had a cold a little last weekend, not much of a voice, and I'm straining, probably shouldn't even be speaking. But I felt it important tonight, a few weeks ago, a name was brought forward that's about to be voted on tonight by one, by the city council of one of our elected officials. I've served four years as an elected official, and one of the greatest, most responsibilities that we have is to eliminate conflict of interest, to eliminate at all costs. I got that from Bob Sullivan multiple times. I actually was criticized, but I recused myself from being unfortunate little league when it came to voting for the signs in the field because I still sat on that board. We've, we've had that numerous times. This council seems to think a little bit differently, and I would like to go and just offer, I guess, a little bit of advice. I was going to try to give the advice to the mayor, but after three attempts, I've never even received a phone call, nor an email, nor a text from you, and apparently it's either me or the subject that you don't want to deal with, so I'm going to deal with it tonight. Council Monroe, at the last council meeting, said she would not be voting on the appointment. I mean, in that, yes, it's great, because David Raume is your husband. For many years, for almost 10 years that I've been involved with the city of Portsmouth, multiple times, time and time again, people have gone and asked why husband and wife serve on two very powerful boards. I spoke to David when the renewal process came up last year. I told David exactly why I wasn't going to be renewing them, just like I did with every other person if I did not reappoint them. And my justification was simple, and David got it. His wife had just been elected as a city council, she was most likely going to be on the planning board. That, that conflict of her being on the planning board and David being on the BOA for many, many years has a lot of people in great concern. And what you are about to do is take two steps back. The boards are operating and functioning beautifully. You don't have people going saying, how is that being approved? How is that being built? Yes, you've got things that are going on in the court systems, but from previous. Now, Council Monroe had asked the right question when she supposedly had talked to Bob Sullivan. I still to this day, nor has the public gotten from our new attorney who served with the Attorney General's offices, I would like to go and give at least her understanding of appearance of conflict. Beth Monroe works in the city of Portsmouth, she's a resident, she's a city councillor. She also owns a business, she is a, is a legal attorney when it comes to doing titles. She deals with it on a daily basis. Daily. She also sits as representative on the planning board, supposed to be quasi-dutishal. Her husband is now about to be appointed under the BOA and has to hold to that same That right there is a conflict, and an appearance of a conflict, which you are supposed to avoid. I would still very much like to get the opinion of our legal attorney on that before you would all go and take this up tonight. If it does go through with the appointment, I'm going to ask Council Monroe to eliminate that suspicion, things that arise, is that when your husband, because in most cases, a variance is granted before we go to the planning board.
Rick, we're, we're at time.
I would respectfully go and ask Council Monroe to go and recuse herself before...
We're at time.
You would go and vote on it after your husband does.
Former mayor Becksteh, please sit down.
And once again, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, Bill Downey, on the topic of holiday parking.
Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street, good evening, everybody. I don't make this a federal case, it's not a big deal on one level, but it's significant to me, and that's parking. Now, I want to applaud Council Blaylock, you mayor, and Tabor because you vocalized your concern about our current policy. I feel very strongly that if we decide on giving free parking during holidays, we do it right, and up until now, we haven't. That, as many of you know, I live downtown, I interact with a lot of people, and if I'm not sure of the policy, I could pretty much guarantee a vast majority of people aren't going to know. So there is a great deal of money at stake. Last year, I learned it's about $30,000 a day, that's pretty significant, right? We have 11 holidays plus Christmas, so I see the Christmas parking is going to be voted on tonight. That is not the issue I'm bringing forward. What I'm asking for is transparency and decency, because I think it's, quite honestly, been kind of sketchy. And I understand there's a lot of money, but if we're going to do the free parking, let's do it right. Let's do it the right way. And I looked into the manufacturer, which is Flowbird out of, I think it's Tampa, Florida. It's simple, it's 350 bucks, you call them like you're making a poster, and on the screen you touch it, it just says Happy Holidays, No Charge. The way we're doing it now is we're dishonest. We're getting a lot of money. What I'm asking for you tonight, and I don't know if you have time, Council Bagley, to make an amendment, but I'm asking for you not only to make the vote, but let's do it properly. Let's show transparency and respect, because if we're truly the city of the open door, let's do it properly. Let's be gracious, and let's be forthright. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Any...
Two hands on Zoom.
First up, Ken Goldman.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Ken.
Yep.
Okay, great. Ken Goldman, 271 Islington Street. Thank you once again for a chance... Thank you once again for a chance to talk to you, I want to talk about parking. I attended the November 21st work session on parking, and I was encouraged that the objectives contain these two items: identify areas of the city that have parking demands that are greater than the on-street capacity, either now or in the future, and develop a framework for managing the parking supply in a fair and equitable way. And I was further encouraged when in the methodology the first bullet read, "As the city continues to evolve, a sensible fact-based approach to parking management is desirable in our residential neighborhoods." And let me repeat that, a sensible, fact-based approach. I was less encouraged, though, when during the meeting titled Portsmouth Parking Program Work Session, the discussions quickly circled back to picking on the Islington Creek Neighborhood Parking Program Pilot. The Islington Creek Neighborhood Parking Program has always been based on past history and anecdotes, and not facts. In all the means I have tended, I have never heard any grand swell of support for the NPP. The survey performed in 2019 was flawed and chaotic, as the number of houses included kept changing. A more recent poll was flawed, as didn't ask the basic question, "Do you support continuing the NPP?", yes or no. I have heard some of my neighbors talk about advocating for this program for something like 15 years, and I'm sure that they are sincere in their belief that it was or is needed. I have lived in the neighborhood for about five years now, so while I can't speak to past history, I can speak to the last five years, at least at my end in the neighborhood, being the part from Cornwall Street to Dover Street. And here's one of my anecdotes. During this time, in my part of the neighborhood, there has not been a problem, and street parking within a block or two of our house has always been easy to find, both before and during the pilot program. Regardless, the facts as presented by the city's parking department have consistently shown that the NPP was not necessary, was minimally effective. I would think that a sensible, fact-based approach to parking management would call for the end of the pilot program rather than extending it yet another six months. Council Monroe's sample motion reads to extend the Neighborhood Parking Program through June 30th for the purposes of developing, adopting, and implementing ordinances, changes to create Neighborhood Parking Program for downtown adjacent areas. This effort would specifically include development of a program for the neighborhood from Cornwall to Bridge Street, which is currently in the pilot program. And I'd have to ask, what is the compelling reason to do this? The NPP has now been in place for over a year, what will we learn that is new in the next six months? And if the city does extend the program, I see limiting the area containing the NPP as a positive step, but I was taken aback, though, by the inclusion of Cornwall Street. Cornwall Street is well outside the area designated by the parking department as high demand. That area is Rock Street to Bridge Street. Cornwall is mostly condos with Wall Street parking, and also two houses that have been working on renovations and have increased their parking. There is no parking problem on Cornwall Street, no reason to include it. I respectfully request that if the NPP is extended, that it not include Cornwall Street.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, one last point, I'll be done, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But, you know, some of my neighbors have talked about how they think the NPP has made the neighborhood feel more like a neighborhood. Well, if you include Cornwall Street, it will split my neighborhood and make ours feel like, less like a neighborhood.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Next up is Barbara Masser.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Masser, I'm the Executive Director of Pro Portsmouth, and along with Russ Grazer, we co-chair the city's Commission on Arts and Nonprofits. And we wanted to thank you mayor and the council for your consideration this evening of the names we have put forward of the subgroup to our committee that will form the foundation for the folks that will be working on the cultural plan over the next year. I also wanted to mention that the makeup of this cultural committee, like the committee that I co-chair right now, we follow a slightly different format. You may remember that the last city council put us together and decided that because so many of the important leaders in the arts and cultural community do not live in Portsmouth, that we were gonna cast a wider net and include people outside of Portsmouth. So I think that's important for our community to know. And of course, Russ and I will be available to you all if you have any questions about these folks. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we will move...
May I please speak?
Oh, sure.
Good evening, Mayor, city councillors, Zalita Morgan, Richard Zavenu, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I kind of want to quickly touch base on the appointment to the ZBA and the conflict of interest. This is not nothing new, that's not the first time, that's not the first council that's gonna come across this, but it is important, it is relevant, and it should not be down play. This has nothing to do with a council or the person being appointed, but actually the true appearance of a conflict of interest. You have a council who is being fully engaged in representing on the planning board, fully engaged in various land use committee meetings, and now you have a spouse being appointed to another powerful land use board. So whether you like it or not, right, again, it's nothing that this person's not good for that board, or nothing related to that. It's about the appearance of a conflict of interest, and it is. My next point, it's about city committees and members and the residency. I thought it was interesting that, I thought that all committee members had to be city residents, and I've seen in other committees, individuals from the region being invited and participating without being committee members. So that should be looked as an alternative to have non-residents, which would be unusual to be sitting on committees. The McIntyre Public Representation, I was a little bit surprised to see that there is no council involved in the negotiations or meetings within this McIntyre. And I really would appreciate if you could clarify, because there needs to be a public representation at the table, and you are elected, you represent us. So if there is no, none of you there means that we don't have a public representation at those discussions, and that is a big, big issue. That's a major project, there is incredible consequence to our city, and really, I would expect one of you to be there. Zoom meetings, I appreciate you having the speakers, you know, showing up there. It would be so great if you could quickly run to us, how do you control if somebody gets like a snag or cannot join the meeting, who is, you know, taking or who is supervising that, so that the public could have an assurance of, you know, this is gonna be addressed, or, you know, it'll be allowed. I have heard of people who, "Well, I wasn't able to join in." I know Zoom meetings, I know can be tricky, so if there could be a little explanation, walking through, you know, what the protocol is, who is in control of the Zoom meeting, and how that's done, right?
Thank you, Zalita.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
You too. Next up, we're moving on to public hearings, second reading of ordinances. First up, public hearing, second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 12 and Chapter 15, city buildings codes. We will first have a presentation, I believe. All right. Shanti coming up?
Yes.
All right. My man, here we go.
Shanti, this doesn't look right, does this look right to you?
I hope not.
This is the 21 pages of...
It's below, should be below that or above it, probably below it. Probably 21 pages below it.
Yeah, it's at the bottom, it should be a little bullet, I mean, market.
I need Kevin.
Nope, it's not there.
Too open. That's building a fire. That's the one I want?
There it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councillors, city manager, city attorney, deputy city clerk, I think that's everyone. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to take a look at the actual proposed and revised Chapter 12, and we can possibly get to that in a few minutes if we need to. But I felt it was somewhat important, and this won't take long, just a little introduction and an understanding of building codes in New Hampshire. So, you know, we know we have a local one, do we need a local one? Probably not. It depends on every municipality, and how, I think, their general zoning and type of construction, proximity to the water, how all that kind of fits in. So we do have one, because we have a lot of little idiosyncrasies and customized areas of our regulations and zoning that we want to accommodate. So, but anyway, the big question is, even if we didn't want a building code, do we need one? Yes. So statutorily, RSA 155A says that all buildings, components, structures constructed in New Hampshire shall comply with the state building code and the state fire code. And those of you that, you know, have any further interest, or have worked with builders or handyman that want to know what we need to, you know, they come into a town in New Hampshire, and where do we find all this stuff? Where do we find all the different codes? So you go to the New Hampshire Building Code Review Board, which is a website, and there's the link, but it's also on our building department webpage, you can find that. So, next slide, please. And that's kind of what the website looks like. On the top left, you can have laws and rules, state building code, different exhibits, links, contact, you can't really see it, but that's what's there. And the next slide, please. And so, in every three years, the code cycle, or the codes are updated. In New Hampshire, we don't always, we're not always current with the three-year cycle of the building codes. So 15, 2015 international codes are what we've been on for a while now. In July of 2022, this year, the state has adopted the 2018 version of the international codes and the 2020 National Electrical Code, which is NFPA 70. So in July, those were adopted. But we have until January 1st to either choose, the applicant can choose either the 15 codes or the 18 codes. January 1st hits, then there'll no longer be a choice. The 2018 international codes will be in effect. So we felt this was a good opportunity to kind of go through our local building codes, which have been kind of revised and added to and taken away over the last, you know, pretty much over the last decade. Some of the numbers, the references, the state building code, they're no longer relevant, and a lot of our local ordinances the state had actually caught up with and kind of made it a moot point for us to keep ours in place. So, but currently, there, there on the screen, are all the different international codes, the International Code Council has authored all of these codes, and we've got the building code, the existing building code, energy, mechanical, plumbing, residential, swimming, pool and spa, and the electrical, as well as the state amendments. So the state looks at all these international codes and says, gee, some of these don't really work for New Hampshire. So the Building Code Review Board, the BCRB, will take suggestions from the New Hampshire Home Building Association, from local building officials, from developers, architects, engineers, electricians, plumbers, so on and so forth. Take all that into consideration, and they come up with their own amendments. So now you come to New Hampshire, and you not only have to pay attention to the international codes, but you also have to realize that there's local, or not local, but there's state amendments. And on top of that, then every municipality could potentially have local amendments as well. So it can be very confusing. And so, our Chapter 12 and 15, previously, or actually in existence right now, are what makes up the city of Portsmouth building codes. About 52 pages long between the two of them, and they're located in two separate chapters, as I said, 12 and 15. So what we are proposing to do, and I think next slide, you can probably go there, there on the table, that's the old one, the red line version, it's just a mess, and literally, it's really hard to follow, there's no real order, you know, to speak of, I mean, it started out really good, but over the years, it just, it turned into something that no longer was really, I feel, applicable or relatable or comparable to the state code, or even to our local zoning that it's supposed to dovetail with. So in our proposed Chapter 12, we start off with the adoption statutory authority. So that's what that is right there. So the, we would, if this went through, it's adopted, together with the local regulations and amendments, the New Hampshire Building Code is hereby adopted or recognized, whether we adopt it or not, it's here. So we would recognize it, together with the local regulations and amendments contained within this chapter, which is Chapter 12, and so be known as the Building Code of the city of Portsmouth. And there are the statutes that allow us to adopt our local ordinance, which could have additional regulations or more restrictive regulations. We can't put anything in our code that is less restrictive than the state code. So for those of us who think, you know, geez, I really don't like some of the sections in the state code, I'd like to get rid of it, we actually can't do that. We can make some that are equal to or more restrictive. The next slide, please. And so, kind of what I mentioned, our new Chapter 12 is coded differently, more in sync with the international codes. Chronologically, it's in order, it's really simple to follow, and it went from the 50-some-odd pages to 20 pages, and seven of those pages are the sculpit administration, which would cover permitting, what's required, what's not required, if there's a dispute, what do we do, a lot of administration. They think about five of the pages are electrical, and the rest of it are combination of your mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and historical, and a section on green buildings. So not a real lot to ours, some of our ordinances were carried forward from what we've already had. Some of what I have in Chapter 12 is offers some clarifications, a few definitions, some regulations that are specific to Portsmouth because of our wastewater treatment facility, once again, proximity to water, and just some general input from contractors over the years. And then next slide, please. So just a couple examples of, and really there's not many, I feel, that are more restrictive than the state code, but one is smoke alarms. So basically, this is just saying that the circuit that supplies a smoke alarm in a home needs to be tied into lighting circuit. This is especially important, I feel, on rental properties, because folks like to disconnect the smoke alarm to turn off their circuit breaker. If you turn off the circuit breaker to the smoke alarm, now they don't have a smoke alarm. If you turn off the circuit breaker to the circuit that's tied in with other lighting, now they're not gonna have light. So more than likely, you're gonna leave that breaker turned on. It's not a perfect system, but it certainly adds to the, I think, to the overall life safety of the residents. Another one is minimum water heater temperatures, which is already in the state building code. I know there are some questions about this, but what we are saying is that you already have to have a temperature, a temperature-limiting valve at all of your hot water storage tanks. Because hot water storage tanks have to be at a certain temperature to kill bacteria. When that water comes out of it, it needs to be limited to no more than 140 degrees. We want to have it limited to 130 degrees, because 140 at a faucet is pretty hot. Bathtubs and showers are already in the code at 120 degrees, can't come more than that. You can do whatever you want after the inspector leaves, right? But when we're there, we want to make sure that we don't have any scalding injuries as a result of us not checking that temperature and making sure that it's following that code. Exterior showers, sometimes a gray area, but we just, I think we've talked about this before as well, this is another one that we feel like, you know, Hampton Beach, you know, Portsmouth, a lot of folks that have sea coast communities, the rinse station is nice to have without having to contact DES, Department of Environmental Services, or tie it into the sewer. If it's a rinse station, which is basically the equivalent of a hose on the side of your home, from cedar planks on the floor, we should allow that. So now we have, we have a section that will allow that. So those are just a few examples of, I think, you know, makes life safety, once again, a water temperature, life safety, and then convenience would be the shower. Once again, a water temperature, life safety, and then convenience would be the shower situation. And next slide, please. And then this is green building, came, it was proposed to us kind of last minute, but we want to recognize it and want to make sure that this is kind of planting the seed. We don't have anything here other than placeholders. So people can look at this, and then come to the inspection department and say, you know, I've got some really good ideas for green building. The next go-around, is there any way you can get those in? So we have some time to work on these, and we can come back to the council and have, you know, some proposals. But at least we have the section in there right now. I feel it's important to start somewhere. So that's what this is. There's really nothing to offer at this point, other than a placeholder. And next slide. So electrical, and I do have my electrical inspector, John Plord, with me, but quickly I will just say that all in all, I feel there's not a lot of the electrical section that is really more restrictive than the state code. We have called out some sections and made them our own that have to do with circuit identification, which really, I think, is applicable in commercial occupancies and hospitals, institutions. So when you get up in the ceilings, the circuit identification would have, you know, a color marked every 10 feet, or 20 feet, whatever it is, specific to that, whether it's a life safety circuit or, you know, whatever the case may be. And John will elaborate on that. But emergency disconnects and shutdowns at the meter location, that's kind of a big one, meaning that if you have a photovoltaic array, if you have a DC battery storage in the basement, you have a generator, whatever those backup sources of power are, we would want the fire department to show up on scene, emergency services, look for that meter panel, that meter, and then shut down all those. That's what that is. That's basically, we can kill the power of the entire home from one location. Instead of thinking the power's turned off, then cutting into the wall and realizing that we have DC power lines running through there and somebody gets electrocuted. So that's what that's about. Generator safety, not a lot different from the state fire marshal's bulletin and what we're supposed to be following right now. But it does offer some guidance and some very clear definitions and explanations of what building openings are and sources of ignition. So that's why that's there. And then the last one is the, would be the adoption of the most recent electrical code. Now, you may go on to the next slide with that one. So this is the last section in the proposed Chapter 12, and it required a different RSA in order to adopt one of the international, oh, actually, no, excuse me, one of the codes that is promulgated by the international code that the state of New Hampshire has not presently adopted. So the state of New Hampshire has in fact adopted the 2020 National Electrical Code, but not the most recent one. So we feel that city of Portsmouth and their residents deserve the best when it comes to life safety and protection, especially from electricity. And John will speak more to that. But I am definitely a firm believer in doing whatever we can and getting the most out of our codes when it comes to electricity. There are some areas that, you know, arguably could go either way, but there's a lot of deaths, a lot of electrocutions, especially around water. There's some, you know, marina protection sections that we have in there. But that's kind of a big one. But what it means is if it was good enough for the nation, the international electrical code, you know, these codes, once again, in the beginning I said, they're made up of information and statistics and data that are put forth from all different trades to come up with these codes. This is an international code. So we feel like, you know, the newest one should be here in Portsmouth. And to be quite honest, it doesn't mean that it's going to be more restrictive. It means that it's evolved to a point, every year, every three-year cycle, they evolved that much more. They've worked the kinks out of them, they've realized what works, what doesn't work. They've taken input from electricians, from engineers, from contractors and developers, and they've come up with this new code. So that's what that is. We would be kind of paving the way for the new electrical code here in Portsmouth if we adopted Chapter 12. So that is my presentation. We do have the Chapter 12 as written, which was the first kind of presentation that came up, which we can, you know, bring forward if we need to go over specific sections. And as I said earlier, John is here, our electrical inspector, if we have questions about electrical.
Thank you, Shanti. Any questions? I know that, Commissioner Denton, you had emailed a question earlier.
Just a comment, at this point, actually. Thank you, Shanti. I'd like to specifically thank you for working with members of the Sustainability Committee. I know they were impressed, which led me to be very impressed with your interest and by simply reserving the green building section. I know there is a couple incentives listed, and this is more for the tax assessor's office, but are currently incentives for solar power and for wind power generation. So if anyone listening is interested, they could reach out to tax assessor. It needs to be filed by April 15th, like any other exemption, but they do exist.
Thank you. And to add to that, I would like to post those on our website. They're presently, they're not in the green building code because we haven't built that out yet. But it is directly related, right, of course. I mean, you're not going to be putting up solar panels or windmills or wind power generators unless you get a permit through inspections. So that's where I would look, is inspections, not the assessor's office. But to your point, that's where you're going to get that money back, is through the assessor's office. But we will post them on our website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cook?
I was just going to echo what Commissioner Denton just said, and thank you personally, Shanti, for working to add the green building section. I know that the Sustainability Committee has a subcommittee on green buildings, and we've been working very hard to look at how we can improve sustainability in the community and specifically with the codes. So I thank you for doing this. I thank you for working with them. And hopefully, this provides us with that additional section in anticipation for a climate action plan and further recommendations down the road.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing what you guys bring forth.
Thank you.
Commissioner Taber?
Thank you, Mayor. Shanti, I, about four years ago, put in a new hot water heater. And maybe you can clarify some of what goes around in the community. My plumber said only in Portsmouth does the hot water have to be 140 degrees, and you have to have the extra expense of a mixing valve. And I was under the impression that was one of those exceptions that, where we were more rigorous than the state code. But is that a state element?
So there was a question about that earlier, and it's kind of a rabbit hole when we get into this whole notion of the temperature, the tank, and then the water going out, and then what temperature it needs to be at each respective fixture, whether it's a faucet or a bathtub or a shower, or it's a residential occupancy, or it's a commercial, or it's a daycare. So there's actually a lot to it, and it's a really good question. The 140 degree, it does not need to be, there's no required temperature in the tank itself that it needs to be at. And that was, I think, some bad information that perhaps I had relayed. But what is required at the state level, and I think it came in in 2009 in the I codes, and it's still here. So every municipality, whether the inspectors are asking the plumbers or following up on it, they do in fact need to install a thermostatic water temperature control valve at the top of every hot water storage tank. So that, the reason is that the hot water storage tank is designed to go to exceed temperatures beyond 140 degrees. And 140 degrees is in fact the maximum temperature that the state would allow that water to leave that tank and go to your faucet. 140 degrees maximum. And the only way to guarantee that that'll happen, it's not a guarantee, but is they have these water temperature control valves installed because they're not that easy to turn. There's, it involves a tool, they gotta get, not a big deal, but a hex head wrench. You turn it, you can adjust it, and you gotta tighten it back down. So the code requires that. So the only difference here is, is that presently, the code says 140 degrees, the water can come out of these hot water tanks. And when it leaves there, it needs to be tempered down at the showers to 120 degrees. But that can happen at the shower valve itself. You don't need an expensive, you know, temperature limiting device on the water tank. But at the faucets, it doesn't say anything for residential. So that means that you can have 140 degrees at the faucets. It's too hot. So we want it to be 130 degrees at the faucets is what we've put in. But regardless of that, you still have to purchase and install that expensive temperature control valve. So the temperature control valve has to be in regardless. So the only thing we're doing is saying, okay, when it comes out, instead of turning it down to 140, we want you to turn it down to 130 while we're on site, right? So you gotta buy the valve anyway, that has to be there. So the water temperature itself, you get 140 degrees, and I know I've kind of dragged this on, but there have been a lot of studies that show, and one in particular says that at 122 degrees, you can begin to kill the bacteria that causes Legionnaires' disease. And, but really, it needs to be at 122 degrees for about three hours. At 131 degrees, you've got to cook that bacteria for five to six hours. That's at 130. At 140 degrees, it takes 32 minutes for that bacteria to die. And we're only saying, keep your tanks at 140, that's what we want. And even at that, it would take a half an hour for that bacteria to die. 151 degrees, it dies instantly. So the hotter you can keep that water inside your tank, then the safer and the, you know, the less bacteria that you're going to have coming out of it by the time it reaches you. So we feel 140 degrees is a really good area, it's time to have. And you still have to have the tempering device anyway on top of it. So, you know, that's required. Regardless of what anyone thinks in the trades, that's the truth of the matter. You have to put that valve on top.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is the extra cost of the valve, which is about 300 bucks nowadays, is required by the state, and we're just putting some sensible temperature rails around it.
That's correct. Yes, Commissioner.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blaylock and Commissioner Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank Shanti and John and all your hard work. I think every contractor, every plumber, every electrician, and I hope every homeowner and every renter is appreciative of this. I know there's a lot of confusion. I know a lot of people avoided this and tried to do it under a, you know, the darkness of the night or something. But I just want to thank you. I think this is going to make Portsmouth safer, and it just makes it easier, which saves people time, saves people's money. So thank you for all this hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Shanti. My understanding is, generally speaking, this greatly streamlines the code book and should make things easier and theoretically cheaper for contractors to do things. The last slide, 1207.12, I thought I heard you say that we were kind of leading the way with this one, the electrical. Maybe I misunderstood your comment. It's the page with the electrical wires on fire. Do you want me to bring it back up?
Okay, so 1207.12 NFPA adoption, right? So, yeah, I must have, I must have not been clear with my explanation on that. So presently, we, the state has adopted the 2020 NFPA. And we're proposing to always adopt the most recent version of NFPA that's in print, which would be the 2023 as of today.
And I guess my concern with that is if, say, Greenland and Rye and other towns nearby are using one version, and we're using another version, does that not make it more difficult to work in Portsmouth?
It could, depending, I think, on the team that you have working in that office. So I've had extensive conversations, you know, with our team, as well as our electrical inspector, that, you know, if the newest version of the code is in fact adopted, you have now become an educator. And that's what I expect. So if someone comes in and wants to work in this town, John will have, and it will be posted on the website, any significant changes. And those changes would not always necessarily be, probably will not be more expensive. They could be a newer technology, because the older codes don't even recognize necessarily the newer technology that's fresh out of the press. So we're going to recognize that, we're going to allow you to use it. We are going to walk you through it if there's any, but, you know. And I do feel like with electrical, I'd really like, John, I think at this point would be a good time to explain if there are substantial, and he's not going to cite every one of those tonight. You know, I know you guys don't have the time for that. But he will, I think, explain his opinion on what the adoption of a newer iteration of a code, of a code is. So if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. John showed up. Come on, John.
How you doing, Councilman? Mayor? City manager? So you have any questions, Juanmi?
I guess my question is, how difficult would it be if you, say, worked in Greenland typically, or you worked in Rye typically, or you've worked in Newcastle?
Well, right now, we're in the-
To work in Portsmouth with this change?
We're in the 2017 NEC right now, National Electrical Code. So the whole state's on it until January 1st, unless you adopt, not adopt, but unless you want to be on the codes until January 1st, if you want to pull the permit that way. So starting January 1st, the 2023 code updates have to be done by all electricians in the calendar year 2023. So all the 20, by probably July, everybody's going to be taking their code updates. So they'll all, they'll all know the 23 code. And the difference between the 23 and the 20 code really isn't a whole lot of meat and potatoes, basically. Most of it's commercial. Some of it, some of the stuff they took out and the Code Review Board took out, but we added in. But it shouldn't be that big of a deal. If you work in Greenland, Nashua, anywhere else in New Hampshire, it shouldn't be a big deal. Plus, they can call me at any time. We'll have it on our, we'll have it on our website, on the Code Review Board's website also.
Okay. So your feeling is that it probably wouldn't be more expensive for an electrician based on this particular change to work in Portsmouth than say, neighboring community?
Depends on what you're doing. If you're doing, like the state pulled out surge protection in the 20 code. We go to 23 code, we have it in there. That's an extra $80 as if a brand-new house doing a service. That's probably the biggest change.
John, would you mind just to, sorry, just to expand on what surge protection is?
In the 20 code, 2017 code, they didn't talk about surge protection devices on services. But in the 2020 code, they actually installed it in the section, in 230. So the Code Review Board actually took it out as one of their amendments. In 2023, if we go to the 23, it'll add it back in because the amendments from the state aren't on the 23 code, they're on the 20 code. So if you're doing a brand-new house or a service change, it's about $80 to $100. A surge protection device covers the, it handles the entire panel in cases of surge, lightning strike, protects all your smoke detectors, your internet, your computers, TVs. That's probably the biggest change between the two.
Okay. And if I understood you correctly, you anticipate that surrounding communities will adopt this code by July of this upcoming year, 2023?
Well, they're not going to adopt it because the state's not going to adopt it until 2026. The state's going, the state is two years behind, two to three years behind. Right now, Massachusetts is going to adopt the code January 1st, 2023, the 23 code. Maine is going to adopt it in June of 2023, same thing with Vermont. I think there's 13 other states that are going to adopt it right away, soon as it comes out.
Okay. I guess my concern, you know, is for the electricians that work in New Hampshire. If we have different code than many of the other communities in the state, to me, that seems like it could be confusing or challenging and make people less or more reluctant to work in Portsmouth, which is what we hear sometimes from the community. But I don't know if that's accurate or not.
No, I wouldn't say that's accurate. There's a lot of people that want to work in Portsmouth. You come down one-on-one at 6:00 in the morning, you get all the electricians from Manchester coming to Portsmouth to work. So I don't know where that information's coming from, but people want to work in Portsmouth.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-ups? I would just say the, there's a couple of things. First off, thank you to John and thank you for Shanti for the work. I had a chance to speak with Shanti, and I've been impressed with the ability to get to yes, to use some of the information that you guys have at your disposal, a plethora of knowledge on hot water tanks, arc fault breakers, everything to try to get to, try to get to yes. I thought one of the things that was interesting to me is not allowing showers before because of the gray water and then coming back and saying, okay, well, if it's a rinse station, you know, how do we define a rinse station? That, to me, tries to get to yes. When it comes to cost, you know, we- When it comes to cost, you know, we definitely hear, from a residential standpoint, that it's hard, I think, to, especially during COVID, when we had a huge, we expected there to be a downturn in construction. Everybody sitting in their house decided that there was, that was the time to change out the kitchen or this or that. And so that was the exact opposite. Not saying that we got caught flat-footed, because I don't think anybody expected that, but we had transitions in the department, and we looked to hire Shanti as the head of the department. It took us a while to get to the point where we are, I think, now, where there's a lot more information. So regards to, you know, Counselor Bagley's point, you know, there's always going to be, you know, different adoptions, especially with cities and towns. But we are a larger city than Greenland or Newington or Rye, and we have an enormous, we have a much bigger commercial district that we have to have simply different electrical codes from the commercial district. But I do think, and what I've been encouraged by when it comes to the inspection department, is to look at the differences between a large commercial operation and a homeowner that's looking to get a project done. I've been impressed in the feedback that I've heard, especially around permits now, is how much faster they're being adjudicated, I guess, how the office hours have started back again. So if you have a question of getting to yes, and I think, you know, part of this is, you know, predictability, and if we go from, you know, 30 pages to 15 pages in a codebook to be able to understand what these answers are, I think we have a, you know, a pretty good starting point to bring predictability, which brings cost here. But I think the hard part for a homeowner, and we're not going to necessarily solve here, is that there's large commercial projects, either, you know, here in town, out in Lonza, things like that, that take a lot of electricians that could be working, you know, the residential onesie-twosie jobs or getting into the, you know, the big meat and potatoes that are, you know, going to have a, they're not going to come with a homeowner that's asking every step of the way, what's going on here, what's going on here, what's going on here. It might be a little easier to work in some of those commercial jobs. But I do very much appreciate the work that has gone into this and the expertise that we've brought. I do think that it's just worth noting that we are, you know, a 400-year-old city on the ocean, you know? Saltwater and electrical, kind of tough to mix at some points. And the changes that I saw when I talked to Shanti had more to do with the commercial applications and, you know, than the resident homeowner. And I do, you know, one other plug, and this is not just a plug, but I did have similar feelings to Counselor Bagley when these first came out, was, you know, when you were working with a, one of the, one of the commercial projects that they couldn't find, the 220 volt arc fault breakers on the 220, you offered them to go at a lesser current, you know, you know, they would still be protected eventually moving over to the larger current when they were back in stock. And I think that's, you know, I appreciate that. And that, you know, that change came about when, you know, a local electrician ended up losing, you know, their life, you know, with an ungrounded or a non-protected circuit in the stove. That was a few years ago. So, and I remember his brother was working in our house at the time, and so that was a, it hit kind of close to home, and I followed that a little more closely. Appreciate it. I think we got what we need. Open up to public comment now, unless there's other questions that we can bring you guys back up.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have one quick follow-up and three very quick clarifications that legal has asked me to bring up--
Uh-oh.
--that have to do with what's been proposed. So, Counselor Bagley, just a quick follow-up is that John did mention that we're in the 2017 National Electrical Code right now. We're actually in the 20. We're in the 17 and the 20. So in July, the state adopted the 17 and the 20. So already, electricians have learned or should have learned the 2020 code. And then, starting in January of 2023, there'll be approximately 15 states that will adopt the new version, which is the 2023 code. So, and when we're talking about different codes, they're not different codes, it's the same code. So we're not saying, let's take the National Electrical Code, but we want to adopt, you know, like the, make up some random name electrical code, right? Nowhere City USA electrical code. That's not what we're doing. So they're both the National Electrical Code, same author, the same editors, everything's the same as far as the layout and the sections. So it's just the updated one, right? And I mean, I say just the updated one, that can have implications, I get it. But I do trust John, he's done the research, and it's not that much of a jump to go from the 20 to the 23, considering the other states, including Massachusetts and Maine, which a lot of electricians have reciprocal licenses. So they're going from one to the other anyway. So if the adjacent states are on the 23 and we're the 20, we're the ones, actually, that are outside of that loop, you know? So it could go either way, but I think we'll be in good shape, you know? We'll make sure that they have what they need when they come to work for Portsmouth. And, you know, people want to work in Portsmouth, to John's point. I don't think this will discourage them, so. And then the last thing is that the legal notice for this was correct, but the language in the Chapter 12, which is, and probably maybe the minutes will reflect this, but 1201.1, which is our adoption, RSA 155A colon roman numeral 5, it should have been roman numeral 4, all right? So that's going to have to be changed. And then the 1207.6.1, which is the electrical code, and also 6.4, it mentions 20 feet or 10 feet and 7.6 meter. 7.6 meter in both of those needs to be deleted, because 7.6 meters is much longer than 10 feet, all right? So that's the problem. That's all we have for corrections in that. All right? And that is all that I have. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Shanti. Thank you, John.
Can I say one more thing?
Feel free.
So last time I was here, we did, we were on the 17 code and we did some amendments. And after we had those amendments passed, I sent them to the National Electrical Code for a public input. So now, in the National Electrical Code, we have the amendments for the outside disconnect and the ranges in dryers, GFI protection, because of Portsmouth. So what happens here could happen in the national level in the future.
We certainly appreciate your, not only your skill, but your dedication to the craft, John--
Thank you.
--and your willingness to work with the homeowners to make sure that they're both safe, and it's easy to work with you and find a solution to those problems. That's, you know, the message, at least, that I tell everybody is just call them up, go to the office hours, ask your question, and you'll be, the rumors of being a tough town to work in are greatly exaggerated, and everybody, once we got through the backlog, is trying to get to yes for these projects, and we know how disruptive those can be, especially with the homeowner that we hear about a lot. We don't necessarily always hear from the commercial folks, you know, opining, but the, you know, the resident who is out of their house or staying, you know, you know, cooking on a hot pot because their kitchen's being remodeled. That's who we tend to hear from, and so we appreciate your flexibility in getting to a safe yes is what we all appreciate up here in the council.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Are there, speaking to the public, are there any public hearing speakers? Not seeing any one rise and no one on Zoom. I'll see if there's any additional council questions and deliberations. And at this point, I'd wait a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at December 14th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Before that, Mayor, could someone make a motion to incorporate the minor amendments that Shanti referenced before moving?
I would await a motion to pass second and reading, including the minor amendments that Shanti Wolf has suggested, and hold third and final reading, the December 14th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or deliberation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a-- public hearing, second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 1, Fire Department, Section 5.101 Personnel, and Article 9, Fire Code. And we have a presentation, I believe, from, oh, chief himself. Oh, no, sorry. In the dark.
Deputy Chief, that out.
Deputy Chief, sorry. There was the haircut.
Very similar. Good evening, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, Deputy City Clerk. Appreciate the opportunity to come up here, and I also like to thank Shanti for doing the heavy lifting of explaining a lot of things that I will not have to explain now. I really just have one slide after the Title I. Go to that. So similar to the building code--
There we go.
--the state updates their fire code, and they just went to the 2018 version. So we have to come, we really have to update ours in order for it to mesh, so they don't, we don't have the conflicts when they do their changes. It also lines up with, of the ICC codes better, because we're on the same additions that the building department is using. So all of us going in 2018 keeps us aligned and on the same page. All we really did, we didn't add any requirements in this version. We just simplified things. There were a bunch of things similar to the building code, where we had maybe some amendments in there, and then the codes caught to them, so there's no need to have them in there. So we pulled them out to be less confusing. And we cleaned up some language. There was, you know, a couple typos and that sort of thing. But the biggest thing was going from the 15 and the 18 code, some of the section numbers changed in the IFC. And so we just had to change our section codes so they matched. So there really is nothing very complicated here. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Deputy Chief Howe. Any questions from council? I have one question, and that's if there is a, if something goes to TAC and there are additional stipulations, what does that fall under from a code enforcement standpoint? And the example that somebody reached out to me was with a residential property that was asked to put in sprinklers as if it was a commercial property. How does, does any code clean up, solidify, you know? And again, I'm more interested in a predictable process that people can expect, rather than if we do one way or the other way, just so there's just, you know, the code cleanup's really important, so we have, you know, costs come down when people expect what they're going to have to do in a project. Can you speak any to that in terms of, does this prevent or still enable TAC to have additional requirements on projects?
So in TAC, at least the things that the Fire Department brings up, and I'm assuming all the city departments, it's all based on the code. We don't make anything up. We don't make anybody do anything that is not within the codes. In the state of New Hampshire, communities are not allowed by law to require sprinkler systems in one- or two-family homes. However, sometimes there's some confusion, because there are other requirements, which, if you have a sprinkler system, maybe you don't have to meet these other requirements. So sometimes something will come into TAC. A good example is people don't want to put in, you know, secondary means of escape windows in a home, while they're required. However, one of the exceptions is if your home is sprinkled, they're not required. So if you're not going to have that, that's fine, now you have to sprinkle. But we're not telling you to sprinkle it at your home, we're just telling you to have to meet the code, and if you want to use that exception. And I think the one that probably comes up the most is access. If you have a home that's, you know, fire off the road or doesn't have the proper width, so our apparatus cannot get down there, you know, there's certain requirements for that, and if you don't meet them, the requirements are less stringent if you have a sprinkler system. So what happens in that case is, you know, we may have, say, a two-family going in, but it's set back behind the building, and there's a lot of that now going on, where people are kind of infilling. And it's not good access. It's a delay for us to get there, and it doesn't meet the state code for access. However, there's an exception in there that if it's sprinkled, then you don't have to meet that access, or the requirements are much less. So we're not telling them to sprinkle it. They could just meet the code on the access. But if they, they can now choose, and I think that's what happens in TAC on occasion.
Thank you very much. All right. I think that was one slide. Easy enough. Any public hearing speakers on this one? Seeing none, I would await a sample motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 14th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any more deliberation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Oh, there's no opposed. I'm not opposed. All right. Thank you. That next up is, all right, Counselor Cooks. We've reached the end of this road here. Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Commissions and Authorities, Section 1.412, Public Art Review Committee. I'd wait a motion to pass third and final reading of the ordinances as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, I will thank you for doing all, well, we'll save the thanks, I guess, to the second one, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 17, Funding of Public Art, Section 1.1704, Exemption, and Section 1.1707, Funding Accepted. I'd wait a motion to pass third and final reading of the ordinances presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, I would take this second to just thank all the members, and especially Counselor Cook, for working diligently on this. I think the, today was an interesting day. There was a celebration at PMAC, celebrating 20 years, and it was, I went and I read a proclamation. I will share something I said there in honor of these, these ordinance changes happening. Let me write the songs of the nation. I care not who writes the laws. Portsmouth in many ways is the Portsmouth we know, not because of what we do up here, but what everybody does out in the arts community, and makes it a place that we are so happy to serve and work so hard, because we love it. And we don't love it because of this dais or even this building, but it's what people create out there. I am happy to see these ordinances pass. It will allow more public art and more of an ability to do so in a way that is meaningful and directed, gets government out of the way, and puts it in the hands of those that are singing and writing the song. So thank you, Counselor Cook, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So with that, before we get to City Managers' items, can't tell if anybody else needs to use the restroom, but I think I'll just give us a quick restroom break here, and then we'll come back to take up the City Managers' items, which require action. So we'll adjourn for five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[471.44]
has granted the city an access easement for water services for this purpose. The owner mistakenly recorded this access easement prior to city council approval. So we are now just cleaning things up and looking for the council to accept and approve this access easement.
I'd wait a sample motion to grant the city manager authority to accept the access easement for water services for Bonza Builders LLC as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The last item requiring action is related to sewer and driveway turnaround easements for property located at 77 Meredith Way. At its last scheduled meeting, the planning board granted subdivision approval to Randy and Jeff Collins, owners of a single-family residence at 77 Meredith Way. This subdivision permits the creation of an additional residential lot on Meredith Way. And as part of that approval, the planning board recommended that the council grant a sewer easement for two sewer laterals across the Collins property and to accept a turnaround easement. And both easements are provided in Exhibit A of your packet. And as part of the approval of the subdivision, the planning board recommended that the council grant the Collinses an easement for private gravity sewer laterals to be constructed crossing the Pine Street Park, which is city-owned, to connect to the public sewer main within Pine Street. Assistant City Attorney Trevor McCourt's here if people have questions. But essentially, this is something that it's good to make sure that we clean up. Currently, there are water laterals that cross the city-owned park, none of which are secured. So this seeks to remedy that. There are no deed restrictions, and the owners have agreed to relocate the sewer laterals at their own expense if they are found at a point in the future to interfere with the city's future use of the park.
I'd wait a motion to authorize the city manager to grant and record a sewer easement to Randy and Jeff Collins and to accept the record, to accept and record a turnaround easement from, and Randy and Jeff Collins in substantial similar forms to the easement deeds contained in the agenda packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions for Trevor? Councilor Moreau?
No, no questions.
Not for Trevor? He's here.
I just wanted to state, to remind some of the city councillors that may not remember, this was actually something that had come before us to do an un-merger, which didn't work out. And I had spoken to the residents and talked to them about doing a subdivision, and now they're doing a great subdivision, and they fixed all the drainage issues and really made a better project of this. So very pleased to have this move forward.
Thanks, Councilor Moreau. Any discussion? Any other questions? I would just have, just to point out on, the portion of the park as identified by the packet is not the, if you're familiar with Pine Street Playground, it's not the playground, it's not the basketball court. It is lower in the grassy area next to some ferns. And did read through the memo that the attorney of court prepared, and they will be replanting and, replanting those trees. And this was something that did not, was not through the assessor viewed as separate lots. And so look forward to the neighborhood welcoming another, another house, and appreciate the effort that went into it, and wish them well with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
And that's it for both Trevor and the city manager.
In that order. Thanks, Trevor.
Next up, our consent agenda. Again, proper motion for the adoption of the consent agenda. I would await a motion to adopt consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick comment on Item B regarding the music hall under the Arts Series. When the music hall first approached the city years back, the idea of allowing them to have hard alcohol in addition to beer and wine, I brought that idea up, and I believe the city manager worked with the music hall on that, so we could include that in this.
I don't see why not. Do we need that as, can we, I would think we can pass the consent agenda as long as the city manager has the authority to act. I think we're fine.
Right, and the city attorney advises me that it's part of their liquor license, so it would be built in.
Oh, great. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is not a presentation from the COVID Response Task Force. We thank them again, or the presentation from Dari. Also, a thank you for Portland, New Hampshire 400. We have a letter from Alyssa Gump-Ruck, Director of Development and Communications for Crossroads House, requesting permission to place tables in front of the North Church in conjunction with visual health on December 21st, 2022. So this is on here, not under, not under consent and not under requiring action. I do believe that we would have, I think there's a, I'd have a legal question on the ability to enable anybody to have tables in front of, in front of the church.
I think the council can authorize it, but the question is whether you want to, since it's a public forum, and whether you want to encumber the sidewalk in that particular location with such heavy foot traffic.
Yeah, I think the, the concern that I have when we're putting this agenda together is given that it's the public forum, given that we have previously stated and put rules in place of the public forum, we do have rules that require, you know, no amplification of sound in that location. But given that it's the public forum, I would hope that the members of the Crossroads House might want to reach out to the North Church themselves and see if there's the ability to host that within their, their land and not with the public forum. And I always hate the term slippery slope, but this is one of those times when we act in the public forum, it will have repercussions. And so we have to adjudicate fairly when it comes to speech and folks that would want to, or not want to exist in the, in the public forum with obstruction in tables. So I guess we would move to place, accept the letter and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then email correspondence, await a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Your Honor, if I could.
Ooh, all right.
I just want to draw attention to city staff that haven't looked at it. There is a great email from Christina Dubin on some EPA grant opportunities, everything from recycling to composting. While back in 2016, I pushed for citywide composting, and that would have cost $840,000. We whittled it down. What ended up being was a $10 rebate to anyone who had a composting residential. So they got that through Mr. Fox. And then the city itself, the DPW, they handed out something like 80 earth eaters. So anything in between, if it's possible to someone, look at those grants which are available and move forward would be great.
Thank you, Councilor Denton. Any other emails to call out? I certainly appreciate that. You did, you did note that before the meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So next up, my name, there was a question on whether or not these were, these followed the rules, the first one, appointments to be considered to the arts and nonprofits cultural committee, cultural plan. We have, these are to be considered, so we can, we can bring this up at the next meeting if you'd like to vote against them. The reason why it's, it's not aligned to the residency requirement is this is a Blue Urban Subcommittee, and so the residency requirements do not happen as they do with a commission that is commissioned, I guess, by us in a standing committee. So to be, to be brought forward next time, and again, really want to thank everyone for putting their name forward to, to serve on that. And it has been, I guess, 20 years since we've had that cultural plan, and it's, it's time to look at that and see what else we can do. So appreciate putting your name forward. Appointment to be voted. I'll await a motion to appoint David Rayum to the zoning board of adjustment for the seat vacated by Jim Lee.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm recused.
So I would simply, there's, the mayor making appointments is, is probably, I don't know, in my opinion, you know, the worst way we can do it except all the other ways that we can consider this. It's, it's difficult to make these non-political, to really look at the applicant and see whether or not you think they are, one, capable of doing the job, want to do the job. That's a, that's a big one with, with the zoning board. It's a long-term, and it's hard. There's a lot of questions that pit neighbor against neighbor. There's a lot of variances. It's not easy work. Takes a disposition that, you know, I don't know, I like making more people happy than you can make on the zoning board. And, and two, it takes a, it takes a, an integrity to be able to do things well above the board so that your question, your, your, your decisions aren't questioned. I feel as though David meets all of those requirements. And it's because of that, I feel eminently confident that he'll be able to do so, even being married to Councilor Moreau. The idea that somehow I, I wouldn't appoint David, who I went before as chair, when he was chair, I've been talking about this deck project for literally years now. But this project that I needed a variance because it was lot coverage, and it was a small amount of lot coverage, but I prepared, I was happy it was on there because my neighbors were actually asking for a variance to do a bigger house, an addition and stay within the neighborhood. So I was happy by happenstance to get to speak on behalf of, of them. I was so impressed with the way that David moved through the, the meeting fairly eloquently. I noted that a chair has to defer and has to run a meeting. Often, I don't do that, I talk too much. But David didn't. He was really good, and he was really fair. And he's exactly what we need on, on boards that require that. And the idea that we wouldn't do so because of who he's married to, it's simply, it's, it's not, it, it doesn't align with the things that I would look for in a chair or a, a member of a land use board, all of the integrity, all of those things that would require you not to speak to your wife if she was on the planning board, or another zoning board member between meetings outside of the public eye, all of these things. It requires integrity. And so if you have integrity, then you can do it. And I think David displays integrity, especially in this place. And I have the confidence of watching him display integrity in the past. That's why I've put him forward. That's how, why I hope you'll consider his application this evening. So we do have one recusal. Councilor Moreau, I will put it out. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilor Denton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where we last left the discussion on the budget review process this upcoming fiscal year, I'd want to consolidate four budget review sessions. Those were the ones on May 9th, which is a Tuesday, May 10th, which is a Wednesday, May 11th, which is a Thursday, and then the following, May 17th, which is also a Wednesday. So all those sessions into a single day. I floated the idea of Friday, May 12th out there. I know there's already some conflict along with May 13th. So the other date, which I'd like everyone to consider, is actually a Monday. That would be Monday, May 15th. And again, the reason why I suggest we try this is it just streamlines the process. Everyone's there at one time. We've done it before as a retreat at the library for probably six, seven-plus hours, but it seemed to be a more effective use of everyone's time. And the public would still have the same opportunities to speak. They'll have even more opportunities this time when you add on the public dialogue, and it's a different timeframe opposed to the normal five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock. It'd be during the day, so we might get more people to show up, or different people to show up. Welcome to everyone's thoughts on the idea of doing it on a Monday, specifically Monday, May 15th.
Don't we?
We have a city council meeting that night.
We do have a city council meeting that night.
So how many hours are we talking?
All of them.
We're talking all of the others.
All the others.
There would be a break, ideally a two-hour break.
Just nice enough to give us a two-hour break on that.
So nice of you.
So, okay, so the, is the, there's not a motion yet on the floor, and I'd ask that we hold the motions until we have the discussion. Any two, four, against on the date? Council Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I agree that we should do it all in one day. I think that's a more efficient use of time. I would also agree that we do it during a weekday. You know, staff has to stay late at a lot of meetings, so having them come in on a weekend for an all-day meeting, I think, is maybe a big ask. What time, or I would just want to make sure we have a chance for the public to comment after working hours, maybe.
We're gonna have a council meeting that night, too.
Okay, so I would just want to make sure that, you know, we give the public a chance to kind of watch the dialogue and then have a chance to speak, two, four, against what we discussed during the day, because it would be a workday.
So just in response to that, we do always have a public hearing. A public hearing on the budget is separate from the work sessions on the budget. We've had public hearings after each budget meeting. That's how we did it the last, previous years. So we will still have the public hearing. We can extend that to multiple dates and multiple council meetings if we so choose at the time. We can also have the, the budget work session, or the budget public dialogue sections that hopefully will, you know, we did once and a few people came, but with a year, and, you know, with a year that there could be more. But I feel as though we would have as much and could always have more dialogue, dependent usually upon, you know, what we're discussing. We will be able to extend that to other budget sessions, and then we still have a few weeks before we have to adopt it, correct? When do we have to adopt? June 30th?
We have to adopt by June 30th. Typically, we seek adoption at the first council meeting in June.
Okay. So if we don't get it right by then, got a couple of bites of the apple, that council meeting two weeks from then, and the first council meeting in June, which is another two weeks from then. So, so right now, we, any other discussion outside of Monday, May 15th? I didn't check. It's not an anniversary for me or a daughter's birthday, so.
I appreciate Councilor Denton's desire to streamline the process. As I said when this first came up, I'd ask us to think about the value, remember the value of having an hour when we're all fresh, or an hour and a half for each department, so that you can really understand their initiatives, what they want to do that's new and different, and so that you can study their budget book well in advance and understand the structure of their department and their key people and their organization. And, and I would just add, having done review, budget reviews for many, many years in the private sector, I always found department by department was where we could really ask questions that might make a difference. And I just think after six or seven hours, maybe it's because I'm 67, but I would, I would wonder about my acumen on this, on the, at six and a half hours. So, so I'd just ask us to consider that. I may be in the minority on this, but I do think that the dedicated time also shows the respect that we have for each of the department heads and their abilities.
Any other discussion? Council Blak.
I mean, if we're gonna get into personal schedules and stuff, I wouldn't mind getting it all done over at one full sweep. I know that's, that's Little League season, that's Old Fairland, it's the day after Mother's Day, there's a lot going on. You know what I mean? It could, normally, I'm missing like three to four Little League games, you know, with practices in between as well as work. So if I can miss one, that'd be a lot better, but I'm not gonna put myself, you know, it might need the priority.
Council Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I acknowledge Counselor Taber's points. However, I do, I do believe most of this council has a full-time job outside of the council. So in effect, we're working all day and then coming in for, you know, two hours of budget meetings. So I think for the, most of us, we're not really fresh in the way that you alluded to, because we've already put in a full day at the office.
Lots of great points here. I think that, Councilor, or Assistant Mayor.
Well, I agree to streamline the process a bit. I worry that we're condensing it too much and not, I worry about access for general public on a Monday of, of we're there for a full six hours. So I wonder if instead of condensing it all the way down, we maybe break it into two versus four, instead of going all the way down to one, if we, if we, you know. So we're still, you know, here for just the three, say, three hours versus six hours. And for me, it's just making sure that it's, that's a lot for the general public if they can't come to watch online at one time and to try to pinpoint certain, certain things on, you know, the recorded meetings. So I just worry about the general public also being able to consume the information that we're giving at that time, we're getting at that time.
Council Cook, got something?
I do.
Thinking about it?
Thank you, Your Honor. I tend to agree with the Assistant Mayor on this. I, while I think it would be nice to be able to sit down and, and go through everything in the course of one day, I don't think that it leads to the level of discussion that we should be having on the budget. And I'm concerned about the time at the end of the day, not having as much discussion in the last three hours versus the first three hours. But I do think it's reasonable to consolidate a few of these down, because it is a lot of meetings, and not everyone in the public can attend all the meetings. So I think it's reasonable to divide it up into two sessions. So that would be my recommendation as well.
And Council Cook? Council Moreau?
I could go anyway. I, I prefer not to probably have four nights. I would go with either one whole day or maybe two half-days, you know, during the week, if we could do, whether it be the first half of the day or the second half of the day, whatever the case may be. I could go either way. I, I'm pretty flexible, it just depends on what days, so that I make sure it's in my calendar.
Council Moreau? One thing that we haven't added to, I think that there is, the second budget that you, we take on as a council is, is only different from the first in that we've had a fair amount of interaction with the department heads, you know, from the budget, but also from dealing with, or inter, not dealing with, interacting with, with staff throughout the course of the year. So I think we're more attuned to some of those issues than the first time you take on the budget. Certainly, that's been my expectation. The thing that I think is an advantage in a consolidated one-day approach is the ability to see the interdepart, or the interrelation of departments and some of the questions that we might ask of a welfare, the, you know, Ellen, we could be also, you know, we would have the police department there as well from a standpoint of being able to have those through lines and be able to realize, you know, some of the interdependencies of the department, and also have all the departments there at the same time to be able to discuss this. I honestly don't think that it's going to be perfect. I do acknowledge that it's difficult for anybody to have, to make time for the city council, especially the budget. It might be that we're discussing a topic at one point in the day that somebody's not able to leave from work, but just as easily, you know, if you have little kids, seven o'clock is probably about the worst time to have any meeting because of the requirements of bedtime and screaming children. So I would, I would await a motion if we have two days. I'm happy to have two days. I think my preference would be to have one day. I don't know if it's, it's tough to even conceptualize what a, a budget day and then the city council meeting after that. I'd really kind of be worried about what that day is gonna look like. I mean, talking about Friday, I'm gonna be, you know, I'll be kicking my feet up on the table here for public comment. So I don't know if I'd be, if we want to pick the 15th, but we could do a morning of the, of the 15th. Mondays are typically a day, I at least try to keep relatively open and free of travel because we have the, the council meeting. And if we had it at the previous Monday meeting, we might be able to do that as, as well in the, in the morning. But we need a date, I guess, is the, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna split up two. Council Bagley?
Your Honor, thank you, Your Honor. Could I have one-third bite at the apple, since there seems to be maybe equal support for one or two days?
Bite away.
If I could put the city manager on the spot.
Sure.
Your opinion, what do you think would be most efficient for you and the staff of those two options?
I appreciate the, the question. I think we'd be happy to, to do whichever works best for the council. I would mention that the public hearing on the budget is on May 8th, so I think we leave that alone, and then we, as a standalone general overview, and, and think about whether it's one big day or two half-days to be some, sometime after May 8th. But honestly, we would appreciate whichever works best for the council.
I would make the motion then. I don't remember the date, Councilor Denton?
15th.
15th. Monday the 15th.
We have a full-day hearing on the budget.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And just for clarification, we mean by hearing consolidating the four budget reviews.
I think that's what he means, yeah. All right, we'll, we'll take a roll call, though. This might be tight.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Council Taber?
No.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Moreau?
Yes.
Council Bagley?
Yes.
Council Blak?
Yes.
Council Cook?
No.
Mayor McKeckern?
Uh, yes.
So then it passes 5:30, uh, 5:30.
That's right, we didn't have Vince. Could have been time. Look at that.
It's almost the time.
It's almost the time.
To recall that one.
All right. Appreciate that, Council Denton. I hope we were in a more efficient mindset for Council Moreau. Forgot, totally forgot, we had parking. We were figuring out the whole parking thing tonight.
All right. You ready for me? Um, before I make my motion, I just want to say that I appreciate everyone's thoughts around the work session that we had. And I kind of took all those thoughts, and I requested a meeting with some key staff people to reflect on what we talked about and to try to start to work towards a framework that might go down the road to work, as we discussed, maybe some smaller chunks of different neighborhoods adjacent to downtown, how that might work, what sizes we might look at, what percentages we might look at. So we had this, a deep conversation, but in the end, I, I looked at them, and I'm like, so how do we move this forward without having all the information that we really need back based off of the parking study and all that additional information that we want, so that we have everybody information possible in looking at everything? So that was where we came up with the idea to continue to extend the neighborhood parking program as it exists today for the time period that it would take us to come up with a program that we'd like to put in place and not have to change. So that was where my motion came in, and I'm happy to take feedback. I can put a motion forward and have it second, and then we can talk whatever you guys would like, but, and I can give you some of the things that we did sort of talk about and reasons behind some of them.
I always think it's, except when selecting council dates, I guess, easier to start with a motion on the floor, so await a motion and then.
I will make a motion to extend the neighborhood pilot I will make a motion to extend the neighborhood pilot program through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, for the purposes of developing, adopting, and implementing ordinance changes to create a neighborhood parking program for downtown-adjacent areas, this effort would specifically include the development of a program for the neighborhood include, uh, between Cornwall and Bridge Street, which is currently part of the part, pilot program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Assistant Mayor?
Thank you, um, I'm really hesitant to continue the, the pilot as is, um, based on, I, I think, the way I took back this, the information was that, at least that far, didn't seem that Cornwall, uh, you know, needed the study, I also, um, on a side note, would, would really like information from either Park and Traffic Safety or our Parking Department on, I think, more alternative ways to monitor, um, or enforce some of the ordinance that we already have for, for night, for night parking or resident-only parking, I think there are still other programs that other municipalities and cities use, um, that could be potentially more cost-effective, uh, than what we are using right, or, you know, potentially continuing this pilot, so I just have a lot of reservations, I feel like that's too big of an area to continue the pilot in, I think we really need to narrow it down a little bit more to some of the more, um, congested areas near, near Rock Street and up to Hanover and Bridge Street, I do believe that we need to figure out some solution for those areas, I think that going out, extending that far to Cornwall is a little bit too much.
The reasoning behind that was from our Parking Director because of the, um, seepage, because if you do it, cut it too deep, then you've got the overflow that's going to go just those projects, that was his suggestion, but if there are other suggestions, that's fine, um, I, you know, I was following the advice given to me, as far as that was a good suggestion of the area to look at, they just felt like as a staff, instead of changing everything the way it works now, just continuing it the way it is, just meant then we didn't have to put in, to try to, like, if you could end it, and then there's just nothing, then I feel like we're starting at ground zero in six months, which we could do, um, or we can just contend, continue it and then figure it out as we get all the information, so, I, I was at a loss as for what to do, which is why I went to staff for help, I was like, looking for, and there was a lot of reasons behind some of the stuff that, you know, we did talk about, of course, my notes are on my phone and it keeps going away, um, we talked about Cornwall to Bridge, and that was for the bleed over, we talked about all residential units being eligible to purchase permits, um, at the ten dollars a month or a hundred and twenty a year, we talked about businesses being able to also per, purchase three, up to three permits, and we, we had reasons for not doing guest passes, and they're very hard to enforce, and they're very hard to keep track of, um, from an admin point of view, um, as far as enforcement, and then additional permits, we were gonna price them that would be the equivalent to going into the parking garage, to try to encourage people, if you have more cars, to actually go into the parking garage, and permits would be tied to, to specific vehicles, um, and then on-street parking would be available to anyone resident of the city at resident prices, so that would be available that way, and, you know, the whole idea was truly to, um, establish a process that any neighborhood could apply, and we talked about sort of sizes of maybe five streets and fifty residential units, we talked about like sixty or sixty-five percent, you know, buy-in kind of numbers, so we have sort of gone down the road to start with a framework that we can take forward, we just didn't feel comfortable without the parking study back and without all the information of bringing something forward right away, so this was the suggestion, and I thought I'd bring it forward to you guys, all have lots of discussion.
Is there a follow-up?
A follow-up to that, um, I, I would be, I would be interested, and I, maybe this would be, uh, a report back from the city manager or Parking Director, um, I would see this as a great opportunity to launch a small, uh, as we've talked about, surveys to the community, to, to this residential area, of, uh, how they feel about continuing, continuing the program, and how they feel about the funding, uh, I'm sorry, about the cost of the program, uh, I know we've talked about different, different, thanks to Counselor Taber, different softwares and different programs that the city would look to use to go forward, to do residential surveys and, and get some more information, I think that, for me, before fully going forward with this motion, I would look to see if that is something that, within a timely manner, um, city staff can arrange for this, for this neighborhood, I just worry about the cost and whether there's gonna be enough buy-in of the neighborhood to make it worth, worth the expense, and I feel like we haven't gotten enough residential data back from the actual residents that live there, we, we hear from, you know, a percentage of residents that want it, a percentage of residents that don't, but I think that we need to get as much data from, like, the actual residents that live there, everyone, that we can get data from.
Thanks, Assistant Mayor, um, Counsel Bagley?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and, uh, thank you, Counsel Moreau, for bringing this forward, um, I, I tend to agree with the Assistant Mayor's, um, points, but I also think that, um, there's a lot of good in this motion, what we might consider doing is taking this, uh, kind of reduced pilot program area, ending the pilot now, um, as scheduled, because it's the winter time, so we probably have a few months where we get up to speed, and I think the feedback we heard at the work session was, you know, the two-hundred residents or two-hundred houses was, was too big a number, so now it sounds like we have a, kind of a focused area that we could go forward with, with the, um, the signup sheet of, you know, and then we'd also get data on whether or not people are willing to pay the hundred and twenty dollars a year, so maybe if this motion could be reworked to, to kind of put, uh, Counsel Moreau in charge, if she'd accept it, of, of organizing the first, uh, getting a small section of the city on board with the parking program, and then actually implementing it, um, with the costs, uh, or with the, the fees that we have proposed, and just seeing where that goes, I think we might get better data from that than just extending the pilot.
Any other comments, Counsel Blaylock?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, um, and I understand this problem and this, you know, the proximity to downtown, um, people wanting to save money, you know, encroaching on your neighborhood, trying to not spend money in the foundry garage, um, so I understand the problem that's been created, my biggest problem, though, that comes before that, is we've already spent a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars studying one neighborhood, all the taxpayers in Portsmouth had to pay for that, so Ellen Parks had to pay for that, uh, Pan Am Manners had to pay for that, um, I just think, and it's, it didn't work, it, it was very inefficient, we wasted a bunch of money, we wasted a bunch of time, we saved like two spaces, I don't know why we are getting far away from this as possible, um, like extending the zone where we, you make you pay for parking, like staff has recommended here, where it would be no cost to the taxpayer, I mean, it's gonna be some cost, 'cause now all the meter rates have to walk all the way down there, you know what I mean, and now they're not monitoring downtown, or there's always gonna be a cost, um, but yeah, I'd be more, you know, what staff is recommending more, extending the parking zones, and then giving, uh, letting the, um, residents, you know, pay for a permit, that they would be, you know, have an exception, wouldn't have to pay for metered parking all day, um, but I would not support another pilot program at the cost of our taxpayers.
Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor, um, do we know what the cost would be to extend the pilot, say, in a more limited zone from Bridge to Brewster, um, for just a time period to, uh, work out a potential parking program for that, that area?
I can take a stab at this, I, I don't have the benefit of Parking Director Fletcher here, I, given that we've assumed some one-time costs already, um, there may be modification of signage, taking down some signage, I think it's about ten thousand dollars a month to twelve thousand dollars a month, give or take, to, um, to handle the enforcement of the area that has been handled, so I don't know how, how, how much that gets reduced, depending on, on the area that gets reduced, but there's a cost associated of, of, with the parking enforcement, um, officers.
As a follow-on to that, too, um, I had some concerns about what it would cost to remove signage and then have to replace signage later, um, because I know the signage is also pretty expensive, um, do we know what the associated cost would be if we remove the parking program signs, and then later go back and put them back up in these, in this area?
I'd have to report back on that, Counselor.
Okay.
Counsel Taber?
I had a lot of thoughts on the whole program overall, but I, I think it's time to speak more directly to the motion, um, as the Assistant Mayor says, we don't know how many people will pay for this, and as Counsel Blaylock says, the other, the taxpayers of the entire city have been paying for this program, right, until now, it's free, it's been given to them free, I think one of the principles we should have with this is that if, if neighbors want to have restricted parking, so that they don't have downtown workers taking their spaces, it shouldn't cost the rest of the taxpayers money, it should float on its own bottom, and they should pay those fees, um, the last survey we had in the Islington Creek area said that only thirty-four percent were willing to pay the hundred and twenty-five dollars a year for the permit, so I'm very concerned that we're continuing to give this away for free, and we don't know if a majority will pay for the permits, um, and, uh, so, I do think neighborhoods that are stressed and clogged with, with downtown workers parking there should have these programs, and I think it's really important how you draw the boundaries, and I think drawing the boundaries should follow the data of, is there more than eighty percent utilization, or are there more than a third of the cars there that aren't residents, um, sensible things like that, and then draw the boundaries, and then, um, if there's enough support, say, two-thirds, uh, then you go ahead, but then, you also have to find out, when you move into implementation, will all those people who said they wanted it actually pay for it? And, that's the question I, that's the question I don't have an answer to, um, and I think I'm loath to keep extending this for free, uh, because we don't know whether it's economically viable.
Thank you, Ca- oh.
Sorry, Your Honor.
Counsel Bagley?
I just have a, a quick, um, question for the city manager, to Counselor Cook's question, um, if we were to, uh, end the program tonight, is there anything that would prohibit us from leaving the signs up for, say, six months, without enforcement? So that if we brought back a program, the signs?
I guess it sends a missed, missed, a mixed message, if you leave signs up, are you enforcing, are you not enforcing? And if that holds true for one area, could people assume you're, you're, you're not enforcing another, I think it lends itself to a lot of confusion, I wouldn't recommend that, I think if the pro, project were to, to not continue past technically yesterday, the signs should come down.
Could I ask a quick follow-up to that? Would it be feasible to just take the signs, and, which I assume would be fairly easy, and leave the posts there in the midterm?
I, I think that's feasible.
Or recommended, I guess, would be, or, a good idea?
I, I'd have to confirm with the staff, I, I'm, I'm certain it's feasible, I don't know, in the long-term, if it, if that's a bit of fatigue of, of things out in the, you know, you know how too much signage becomes a fatigue thing, um, we can report back on all of this, if, if that's the will of the council, certainly they wouldn't come down, uh, tomorrow, they would take a few days for the, the staff to mobilize, but I, 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 that would be the information I could provide in a report back, not before the next meeting, but for, for the next meeting, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Before the vote, uh, I guess I should start doing this, I gotta pass the gavel, um, so, I don't know why we can't just, um, I don't necessarily think that we need to extend the pilot program, I felt that was, based on the conversations from the last meeting, most people were in agreement that we had time, and the, uh, the time meant that we could, uh, because of the winter and less people are out there, um, two, uh, throughout the whole thing, I guess, the thing that, that, um, sparked my interest was from the meeting that we had, was, uh, the effort from, uh, to extend the parking, the metered parking within the downtown was brought about by, by business owners, now, um, the business owners would have a stake in that they wouldn't be able to park in front of their businesses anymore, but they needed that because they didn't want other people to park in front of their businesses any longer, I think there's a, uh, a, a system that presents itself to us at the moment, that we could, we could implement, uh, through the ordinance process, and that would be if the residents, uh, met a seventy-five percent criteria on a street-by-street basis with an adjacency to the downtown metered parking zone, could request that their, um, their street be metered, uh, and in a, in a return, uh, they would be, have their, their, uh, uh, their vehicle and any vehicles registered to the, uh, to the, the resident that is on that street, uh, or the adjacent street, or the, the, yeah, I guess that street, um, would be able to be whitelisted for a hundred and, a hundred and twenty bucks, uh, from a flat rate, and could park there as much as they wanted, and then we could make sure, to Counsel Taber's point, that we would get the buy-in of the people that knew that there was gonna be paying for it, because they would be paying for it, they would be asking to pay for it, they would be asking to have their street have parking enforced on the street, and we would do so through the parking app, I know that that's not a perfect system, again, it's just a system that we have for other people, because they wouldn't have to use the parking app, they would go down with an application to the parking office to list their, their, their license plate within, uh, the, uh, wi- within the system, and so they would be, they would always come up as paid, um, so it avoids the, the having to use the parking app for those residents that might not be able to, it doesn't force for guests to be able to have to use the parking app if they're parking at a designated hour between, I don't know, if it's eight and seven, or eight and eight, how we do the rest of the, uh, the, the city, um, and then there's a clear way for us to be able to define that, um, from a resident demand, it would come before the council, we would align on streets, up until the second reading, we could add streets, uh, to that, um, and then, as long as it's contiguous, we would be, have a, a project that would enable us to, uh, to pay for a program, uh, because it would simply be enforcing, uh, enforcing parking, I guess I'd like thoughts on, on, on that, because I think the ordinance, if we go too long in terms of parking, they were parking and, and projects, we probably should just have, like, when we build a garage, we should probably enforce some parking outside, directly outside the garage, like, that would be, you know, that seems like a reasonable thing to do, so people don't just look at the garage and be like, oh, let's go park there instead, that seems like a pretty reasonable way for us to, to solve this problem, and we, we already have a mechanism to do that, it's the ordinance process that we used for the small businesses that requested it on the outskirts of downtown, and if we simply ask, uh, set a criteria of seventy-five percent on a per-street basis, um, I think we could, we could get the buy-in of the, or, or not, um, but, and figure out a, a way that, I can't request parking enforcement in front of my house, because it's, it would be outside, and so, set a limit on what that outside, um, area of what a traffic meter or a traffic, uh, enforcement officer could travel in order to enforce.
May I?
Oh, I don't have the gavel. Gotta ask the Assistant, no, 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 you're still, it's 'cause...
Yes, um, and we talked about a lot of those kinds of as- aspects in our meeting, problem is, we don't wanna change an ordinance that we might then get the parking study back and wanna change it again, because it does take a lot of process, three readings, as we know, and wish to get something, so, we were hoping to just try to find a way for an interim while we are getting that information back from the parking study, so that we could make sure we incorporate appropriately, that was all.
When would we have the parking study back?
End of the, end of twenty-three?
Oh.
End of twenty-twenty-three?
No, I was told, like, we'd have that information by, like, March, I think it was March, it was, it was actually, uh, the plant, the, um, DPW Director who set the date of the end of June, he thought we could have the information back and have something organized by the end of June, yeah.
The Deputy City Manager is nodding.
She was in the meeting, yeah.
I was not, I'm not.
So, that, that was why that timeframe was picked, for the record, so.
Okay, and I could, if there's a way that we would not have the, um, if, if we would change, what, what do we envision changing if we have the parking study back, what information do we not have for a s- a s- for a street that is adjacent to the downtown to request enforcement of parking with a--
We had made, when we were originally talking in our, I think it was in our work session or maybe another meeting, we had asked for them to add, because they were just getting the RFPs back to that circumference, for them to actually study all the adjacent neighborhoods, I believe, around it. So I think just getting what information is going to come back in that. And I don't know what the information is going to be. I just know that we've requested for them to look at that with the specific thought process of wanting to extend parking management for the lead from downtown.
Okay.
Any more questions, comments? We're handing the gavel back.
Madam Assistant Mayor, I think we might be smart to consider two-thirds instead of 75%. If two-thirds are saying they're willing to pay, I think that's a pretty good threshold. That's something we discussed at the work session.
Yeah, we throw around the number around 65%, so that would be about just over two-thirds. Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Clarification. The motion on the table is Counselor Rose's motion. All the discussion we've had since then doesn't really-- we haven't amended the motion.
Nope.
So if we were to vote, we're voting on this motion with no changes.
Correct.
Which I kind of feel, the temperature in the room, that possibly that motion may not pass. So should we make an amendment, or what's the right course of action here?
If you're so inclined, I would say you would move to amend the pending motion.
I move to amend the pending motion to-- I guess I really can't amend this.
I figured it would just get voted down, if that's what's going to happen.
I yield the floor, yeah.
I feel confident not voting for this, not because I don't think that we would have that. I just think the confusion. I don't think the-- I felt really good coming out of the work session, better than I thought it would come out of the work session, especially with voices that had been somewhat contentious before, speaking, you know, a little bit more from the same songbook. And I think that there is a pathway to look at this, not as a neighborhood parking program, but from a parking management program, with the impacts of the downtown, and to extend that through the ordinance process. And if we do that and have to amend that in the future because of the parking need study, will be dependent probably on the speed at which the residents would want to file a petition to the city to change an ordinance. And I'd expect, you know, expect a framework, whether it's two-thirds or 75%. And it probably-- it's tough, because we're asking people to, you know, pay something, but to come back as a framework for the next council meeting if we wanted to move quickly, but could see that it could also wait. I'm not calling anybody. You got it.
Counsel Denton.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is more food for thought, but if we're going to do a street-by-street approach and amending an ordinance, would it be possible to have that go through the parking, traffic, and safety, so only hits us through the minutes per street, and then just once a year with the omnibus? I'm seeing someone shaking their head, so. Just don't need a response tonight, but that might help streamline things, if it's possible.
Any more comments?
No.
Counsel Taber?
Yeah, I think if we don't-- if we don't vote for the motion on the floor, and we amend it, maybe we have staff come back with, what is the path for a block to appeal to us to have an ordinance that gets them the same thing that they would get through the MPP? You know, if staff could say, here are the steps the people on a street could take.
Your Honor.
Illegal inquiry. Would we be able to, as Counsel Denton suggested, go through the PTS in the action minutes of the meeting, have a request to have a temporary addition to a street-by-street ordinance, or a street-by-street enforcement without the ordinance change?
That is a difficult question to answer, but it sounds like you could. But I'm not 100% sure. Attorney Woodland has-- I'm going to phone a friend.
My least-- one of my least favorite topics, parking. Sorry. Let me just say this. I mean, there are certain actions that you can take through the omnibus. What I understood from talking with staff, Peter Rice, Ben, Jane Farini, who typically is drafting the ordinances, and just my observations from this conversation, is that you really are at the point where it is a political decision of this body in terms of how you want to go forward. So we will work with whatever direction you want to go. You do need to understand that, given what we were hearing, possibly is that if you wanted to continue the program, particularly for that one neighborhood, you would not want to take the sides down, et cetera, and that it would take some time to develop an ordinance that might be flexible enough for you to more easily identify adjacent parties, build in, perhaps, the 65% or 75% threshold number to kind of trigger a review and evaluation. So the initial thinking was, if the direction that you wanted to go in was to develop a program, then maybe one option is keep the current one, even though there is a cost, while you work to develop that. What I'm hearing, though, is maybe it's a little more complicated, because there's not confidence that indeed enough of the neighborhood is committed to moving into that program. So I think you really are at the point where you're going to be looking at an ordinance change. It's probably time to leave parking, traffic, and safety. And I know Counsel Bagley's really happy that I'm saving that statement. And one of the things we could look at is coming back in January. I mean, it is the quiet months. And see if we could capture something for you that would, again, have a triggering threshold, because we talked about this, how to find that trigger point where it seems to make an impact. I do know the parking director is working. He has, you know, kind of expanded the study scope to include, you know, how do we maybe deal with these adjacent areas? Are there other tools that we're missing? Do we raise some rates on certain streets so that we can maybe manage it better and differently? So there are a lot of moving parts, and I'm sorry, there's not an easy pathway forward. And, you know, that's why it is a tough one. I don't have an easy path through, but I think you are looking at an ordinance change. And what we were thinking is, whatever, if we wind up doing something, if you wind up doing something that we implement, you know, and it has a threshold trigger, you know, you're adding streets. As you know, in the ordinance, there's lots of streets. It's just listed, street by street. And here's the mechanism and the charge. So that's the challenge there. So not some great answers, but--
Thank you. Your Honor.
So I just had a question on-- so I wouldn't expect this council to shift the buck back to Counsel Bagley's committee, the PTS. But I do, one thing that I've learned about the PTS is their unique ability to pass things in a temporary manner ahead of an ordinance change. And so the question, I guess specifically, is could we direct the PTS to hear and hold applications and vote them up or down based on qualifications that we set for participant engagement or street engagement, and have them vote on that to go into the action minutes that we can then adopt, knowing that an ordinance change would then be required at the end of the year, but would have time to adopt streets as they might decide to come on? And also, they could decide to petition us not to vote in terms of favoring that in the omnibus at the end of the year? And this was Counsel Denton's good idea.
Mayor's far more eloquent than that.
So I don't know with 100% confidence whether you can do it entirely through the omnibus, you know, function of adopting the minutes, simply because of the nature of the charges that you want to add to it. If this were just removing stop signs or parking spaces, I'd have, I'd be confident saying, yes, you could do lots of that minor adjustment through the omnibus. I'm a little in the gray zone, and my apologies, this is not normally where I'm deeply immersed, as to whether you can do it for the type of thing that you're talking about. Now, I do agree that the City Council can set a policy that might help then guide the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee in its actions, and that might be really helpful. So--
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we would have to, because if it qualifies as a property taking, I don't think it would qualify as a property taking, or their money, possibly. But we would have to have a public hearing if it was, you know, in terms of taxes. I don't know if fees qualify for that, but I think at the next meeting, we should have-- I guess I have enough for what I need. We won't kick it to Andrew.
I'm going to give it to Counsel Cook first, and then I'll come back to Counsel Bagley.
Thank you. I would have a concern, too, about going a route that we pass an ordinance saying that if a certain street hits, you know, 66%, that all of a sudden, they can join without having then a public hearing in this forum or in some forum before that occurs. And the reason I say that is that you will have an impact, not just to that street, but to the neighboring streets, especially when we're talking about streets that are near downtown. In some cases, these streets are the only street in their vicinity that actually has parking. So it's not just the parking for that street, it's the parking for that street and the street over. So I think it's important that we have a hearing every time we add a new zone, I would say, to any kind of parking enforcement program.
Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. I think, I agree with Deputy City Manager Woodland that, you know, asking parking, traffic, and safety to kind of make these decisions is a little bit unfair to them. However, perhaps if a counselor came back with a clearly-defined neighborhood with, you know, asking people to sign up and pay, and then that was enacted, and it was the greatest thing, and everybody loves it, we might get to a point where you could add a street to an existing program through, like, say, PTS. So if you wanted to add one more street, it's a little bit more streamlined. But I think the first bite at the apple really has to be at the council level. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any more comments? Just to make a quick comment. I mean, in our discussion, it really came down to, do we want to do this by an ordinance change or by a City Council policy? And that really where we went back and forth, really not knowing where everybody else would fall on this. Obviously, an ordinance, it takes longer, it's more involved, but it's permanent, where a policy can change pretty regularly. So that was where we kind of then got stuck as to what avenue to go down, and felt like this needed more discussion in what direction. Discussion we have had. Gavel really lights you up a little. I guess with that, if we have no more discussion, we would call the vote.
Is that what we're doing? Are we doing a roll call?
Are we doing a roll call?
I don't know.
We're going to call the vote.
Could we get the motion again?
Yes. So we're just doing her original motion, I believe.
Yes.
To extend the neighborhood pilot program through June 30th, 2023, for the purposes of developing, adopting, and implementing ordinance changes to create a neighborhood parking program for downtown adjacent areas. This effort would specifically include the development of a program for the neighborhood from Cornwall to Bridge Street, which is currently in the pilot program. Okay?
Yeah.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Counsel Taber?
No.
Counsel Denton?
No.
Counsel Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
No.
Counselor Blaylock?
No.
Counsel Cook?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. Mayor McCookren?
No.
And it fails seven to one.
I will pass this back now.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Appreciate that and the work that will come on that. If anybody thinks that's the end of that, it's not, even by a long shot. So appreciate the work that's going to go into it over the winter months and hopefully have something back. Counsel Bagley, you're up.
We're going to talk about some more parking. Thank you, Your Honor. One is the Parking, Traffic, Safety Committee Action Sheet and Minutes of the October 6, 2022 meeting. I move to approve and accept the action sheet and minutes of October 6, 2022 Parking and Traffic Safety Committee meeting. And if I have a second, I'll speak to it.
Second?
These are the meetings that we've put on hold, because they're going to effectively end the neighborhood parking program when we approve them.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And second is Parking, Traffic Committee Safety Committee Action Sheet and Minutes of number three, 2022 meeting. I move to approve and accept the action sheet and minutes of the November 3, 2022 Parking and Traffic Safety Committee meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Now, this is the fun one. I move that we have free on-street parking for up to three hours from Saturday, December 17, through Monday, December 26, in celebration of the holiday season. We hope residents and visitors will take advantage of this and support Portsmouth's wonderful local small businesses, restaurants, and nonprofits.
Second?
Any discussion? Assistant Mayor?
I was not here at the last meeting, but I did watch it. But I thank Counsel Bagley for bringing this up. Him and I had a pretty vigorous, in-depth conversation about this. As a small business owner downtown, I understand that, you know, there was some hesitancy of what this could do to our traffic movement. But I think it's so vital to bringing people downtown, and also is a reward for, you know, some residents to get them downtown during the holiday season. And I think it's something, it's a tradition that, you know, our city's done for the last few years, and we should make sure that we keep it going. I think it's very important for morale, and I'm very happy to see this on here.
Your Honor.
Counsel Taber?
Just for clarification, we will be enforcing the three-hour limit. Is that correct?
That would--
Unless it's amended.
Yes.
Right. No, I think that's important, so that we have turnover. Without the economic incentives that we have in stay and pay, when they go away, we need some way to have turnover so that spaces are open. I think that's important.
All right. Counsel Moreau?
After getting recently an email from one of the members of Parking, Traffic, and Safety, you know, I'm now hesitant to want to do this. And we don't seem to have a problem getting people to come downtown. We are giving up a lot of money to do so. So I don't, I get the tradition, we've always done it, but it is a big hit to our revenue. So I think I'm kind of against it now. And I am the love of Christmas, don't get me wrong, but I'm going to be bah humbug on this one.
Counsel Moreau, Assistant Mayor?
Never mind, Your Honor.
Good. All right. Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. To Counsel Rose's comments, I will say that, you know, the study and the research shows that it's better for the economic vitality of our downtown if we have the turnover with paid parking. So from a, not from a city revenue standpoint, that was secondary, although obviously, it's always important. Just from a letting the most shoppers shop at stores perspective, because people want to be in our downtown, the free parking doesn't make the sense that it used to make. However, as the mayor's pointed out several times, not all of the city watches these meetings, and most people probably don't study parking as much as some of us in the city do, and maybe not familiar with Donald Shoup's work. So I think we keep going with the free parking, because people expect it, and as the Assistant Mayor, I think, said, it's, you know, it's good for morale. good for morale.
Council Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. While tonight I am going to support the free on-street parking for this time period, I think it's important that we start thinking about what we're doing next year, and maybe in between now and next year, we, we work on an education program for residents and for business owners downtown to help them understand what parking enforcement actually does for businesses, why it improves turnover, why it improves shopping in downtown, because there is more turnover. People spend more, they, they come in, they drop in, they pay for their hour of parking, and then they leave and somebody else shows up, and that means somebody else gets to shop. And sometimes we just don't do a very good job of explaining this not only to our residents, but to our businesses. So I would suggest that next year, hopefully, we, we have that opportunity before we hit this stage to provide that educational support to our residents and business owners. And we consider something maybe as an alternative, like free parking in our garages where people can ride the shuttle, the free shuttle around downtown to do shopping. And then the parking that is on-street is still paid parking. So if you have to park right there, right up front, you're still paying, but if you park in the garage, you still get free parking, you're just riding the vintage shuttle around town. Just a suggestion for next year.
Thank you, Council Cook. Any other comments, thoughts? I'll just, you know, it's my, my favorite, I guess, beverage, coffee, beer, what have you, is, is one that somebody else buys me. It's never tastes as sweet, you know? The, the aromas or the, the coldness of the beer are never quite as strong as when somebody else, you know, offers that to me. I think what, you know, what free holiday parking, it's a, it's a loser on city revenues. I think that's pretty clear. It might be a loser on turnover for the downtown. What I haven't been convinced of, and why I'll support holiday parking, yeah, the free holiday parking, is that the feeling of, of gratitude that you, you get as a patron when you come to the downtown and you find a, something that in this world that seems to charge you, and we are, you know, susceptible to that, charging everything, you get a sense of, hey, this was a time before when I didn't pay for parking downtown. Our hope and the goal of this, and why I want it advertised, is that we take those into the small businesses and we say, hey, you know, I am in the holiday spirit, I'm going to spend a little bit more in this store than I would have otherwise. It's not because we just want people downtown, it's what, we want them feeling jolly downtown, going to the businesses, spending money, and thinking that they got something, you know, they got something for free, so that they, they go in psychologically wanting to, to spend a little bit more money in our downtown and help our retailers at a time when everybody, you know, needs that, especially in our, in, in our downtowns if they're, you know, going through COVID. So I'll support this. I think there's, you know, clever ways we can think about doing this in the future and well-being, all those, you know, I would caution against, as, you know, when we, even when we moved free parking to a time when people were actually in the downtown and not during COVID, there was still a feeling that we were taking something away, and a reminder is probably the most powerful, you know, force in all of politics is just the status quo, and to change this, we're going to have to have enormous data from whoever the author, Council Bagley pointed out, is going to have to, that would have to come to fruition for us to be able to, to not support free holiday parking. But with that, I will, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. We did it. And now I'd wait a motion to go past 10:30.
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Fortunately, you do all the work and you don't have the So we have the approval of grants and donations. A donation to the Cemetery Committee from Carrie and Peter Rubenstein for Cemetery Projects totaling $2,138. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the donation.
Thirty-eight cents.
Oh, 38 cents. I was going to get that in the, the actual motion. I would await a motion to approve and accept the donation from Carrie and Peter Rubenstein for the Cemetery Projects in the amount of $2,001.38.
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a big thank you to Carrie and Peter, and I believe that Carrie and Peter do serve or have volunteered on the Carrie does. So thank you, Carrie, for putting your money where your mouth is on that. Very much appreciated by all of the residents of the city of Portsmouth. Next up, City Managers' informational items.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up would be the regular update on the McIntyre Project. Just for the folks watching at home, shortly before the meeting, we made public a memo that was shared with the council, prepared by City Attorney Susan Morel, and we were going to speak to that memo. We're also going to speak to the final design plan set that is not only provided to the council, but provided to the public in the updated council packet this evening. So I'll, I'll share with the public and with the council some of, some of this memo and, and add to it as, as makes sense, and City Attorney Morel will chime in when I'm, when I'm done. To remind folks, in April of this year, the City and Sobo Square LLC, hereinafter referred to as Sobo, executed a settlement agreement that resolved a lawsuit brought by Sobo against the city related to the McIntyre Project. As you all know, the building is considered a federal monument owned by the General Services Administration, or GSA, and under the federal monument program, the city could purchase the 2.1 acre lot with buildings for $1 if the National Park Service approves of the costs, building and site design, along with a preservation plan and financial plan for the project. Under the settlement agreement, the City and Sobo are contractually obligated to work in good faith toward a final design and financing plan for this project that is acceptable to both parties. And as such, we've been actively designing the community plan over the last seven months in strict accordance with the settlement agreement. And in, and following its terms and following our timeline, we've completed the design, the design remains the community plan, we're close to finalizing the preservation plan element of the NPS submittal. The piece we do not agree on is the pro forma or the financial terms. So as such, we had to check in, our regular check-in every 45 days with the GSA back on November 22nd. We explained where we were at in that we had resolved, or were close to resolution with two of the three elements of the plan, but had not agreed on the pro forma, and as such, we sought an extension of our license agreement with the GSA. We were granted a three-month extension conditioned on conceptual approval by the NPS or the National Park Service that our design would meet its criteria for approval. So we, we took that and we are continuing now to negotiate the finances, given the estimates for construction, which we are sharing in the memo with the public. We were, we worked in partnership with the developer to obtain and now speak to preliminary cost estimates given by three different firms, and the preliminary estimates are widely ranging from a low of $74 million to a high of $147 million. So what I can say is that what we are continuing to do during this three-month period is explore the financial viability of the project and to work to make it more economically feasible to build it, because that is what we are obligated to do. I'll turn things over to the city attorney so that she can share more of the legal aspects.
Thank you. I think it was brought up earlier today in public comment, a question about the financial documents, the development agreement, the ground lease, and the contribution agreement, and the pro forma. All of those financial documents are documents that include financial stipulations in regards to revenue sharing and in regards to who's contributing what to the project. Those remain under negotiation between Sobo and the city. In order to perform our due diligence for the city, we have contracted with a financial consultant, David Eaton, to go through the numbers in the pro forma and the estimates for construction costs, and also to assist us in negotiating provisions for the ground lease and the other documents that need to be completed. We anticipate we'll be able to finalize that within the next three months. So that is the period of time we ask for the extension from GSA. And in the meantime, we do have the final design of the community plan that is being submitted to the National Park Service for their preliminary approval. That's not an application that's being filed, it's simply the design is being filed with NPS so that they can give the initial approval. The representative from the GSA indicated there's no point in giving you an extension if the National Park Service doesn't like your design, so that is the reason for having that submittal. So all of our, moving forward, there will be significant discussions and negotiations with Sobo regarding all the terms of this project and the contracts that we have. And under the settlement agreement, we are obligated to split the costs of any outside consultants, any experts. And while we go forward in the next three months, not only will we have the expense of our financial consultant, but also any additional design work as we work towards negotiating a design that might be more financially feasible, in addition to, I think, probably several other items that I couldn't list right at the moment. But, so that brings up the final issue, which is a request for supplemental appropriation to cover the costs we may incur in the next three months, and I'll give that back to the city manager.
Thank you. So while we did anticipate and budget for the services of David Eaton, assuming we are successful in working with our partner to modify the design, it is anticipated very conservatively that costs per party could be up to $50,000 per month. So at the next council meeting on December 14th, we are anticipating, providing a, submitting a request to you to grant a supplemental appropriation of $150,000 to pay for these costs. And to the extent that number can be refined or confirmed on, for the next meeting, we will, we will do that.
Any questions, comments? I have one, since folks have asked about the, the process and how public the process is going to be. We have not yet received an application that the city has looked at and said, this is, this is the best that we can do. In order to do any project, any application, it has to come before the council. Application has to come, has to include a pro forma, has to include a ground lease, has to include a development agreement. All of that as an application will be a public process, where we will vote on this to send it to the National Park Service. Right now, the negotiation, it's still in negotiations around numbers, is happening between Sobo Square and our legal counsel and city manager. That's not to say that we will not be involved, but we will be involved at the time of which it's time for us to decide whether or not we accept the agreement, which is a public, which will be a public process at that point.
Thank you. Next up would be a report back on funding to be considered for the Greater Portsmouth Recovery Ready Community Coalition. As you will recall, they presented at the last council meeting, and, and were seeking support in the amount of $60,000 per year for a total of two years. So as provided in the packet, there, there's a suggested way to fund their request, and I would await guidance from the council as to whether you would seek to do that.
Your Honor? I'm actually going to not make a motion at all and just request that we don't take any action at this time. The, and although I did ask for that report back and I appreciate it, the COVID Response Task Force, both Laura Waltz and Whitney Brown were here, and we gave them additional time, six months, their request to continue to see how the ARPA funding could best be spent, and one of the biggest things up on the board was the substance misuse, how best to explore it. So I think it might be better to wait to take action here, to see what comes from that opposed to taking action. But again, no motion from me.
Thank you, Council Denton. Council Cook and Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is actually a question for the city manager. Wasn't there a deadline at which time they needed the funds in order to get matching
They were seeking funding to commence January 1st, 2023, in, in the first tranche of 60,000.
Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would support Council Denton's feelings. This is a fairly significant ask for, I don't know if there's a similar ask that's happened in the past by a, I know they're local, I think they're in Elliott, Maine, but we have a lot of nonprofits based right here in Portsmouth that are not making such substantial asks. So I understand the, the timeline for them. I think it moves this council to spend the money as wisely as possible, and I don't feel that we're in a position to do that until we, we hear back from the, the task force.
Any other comments? The, the funding is, is, just to clarify, it does not go to the Pine Tree Institute or does it? I thought it was the funding for the Greater Portsmouth Recovery Ready Community Coalition, which includes the Pine Tree Institute as the executive director, but it's a cross-departmental, across the police, fire, local judges, Rockyham County, and representatives from the city. It's, it's inclusive of, of, of that work and not a, another firm. Is that correct?
That's correct, and they were careful to mention that they have established a New Hampshire, a Portsmouth-New Hampshire-based 501(c)(3) designation for this group.
Your Honor?
Council Taber?
Since there's no motion on the floor, I would propose a motion that we, as proposed by the city manager, use surplus welfare funding and release $60,000 of those funds in all for the Greater Portsmouth Recovery Ready Community Coalition.
Second?
Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now that there's a motion on the table, I am strongly opposed to this. I don't think we have enough data to say this is the best use of the funds. We have a lot of deserving nonprofits out there, and I don't have a full understanding of what this money is actually doing.
Your Honor?
Council Taber?
Well, we had this group present to us, and it actually originated in the previous council. They said that they, a major objective of theirs was to create a, a place where those who were in recovery could stay and be safe in their recovery. They did that. They've had a number of other actions that they said they would do, and they have achieved them. And so I think if you look back at what they presented to us, you could see accomplishments with the funding that they had, and I think that what we're doing is letting them continue to accomplish things.
Council Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I agree with what Council Taber has, has said tonight. I also think it's important to realize that this is not an ARPA request, so we're not talking about ARPA funds with this request. This is entirely separate, and this request is coming from an ongoing program that the council had already supported in the past. So it, it's not as if this is a new committee that was just set up to, to advise the council, which is the case with the other committee that is still doing, completing its work, and I anticipate that, that when they do complete the work, the council will hear their recommendations as well and make decisions, but those decisions are, are around ARPA funding, whereas this decision is not around that. It's around surplus funds that would be going to a purpose that has been highlighted as a major issue in public health in our community. And we've known that this is a major issue in public health for quite some time. We have considerable requests for additional funding in public health.
We have considerable requests for additional funding in public health matters, so many that we cannot fund them with ARPA funds. So I think that that's also important for this council to remember. So this is additional funding in addition to ARPA.
Counselor Bagley?
Your Honor, do we have the presentation ready so we could see what this money is actually funding specifically?
I don't have the presentation from last council meeting, but it would be part of the November 14th packet.
It starts at page 143.
I apologize, I did not bring the hard copy with me.
Okay, thank you. I've got it here now, too. So I guess, Your Honor, if I may, I just want to highlight that this is funding for coordination, training, systems, data and reporting, community education, and stigma reduction, and why I agree, those are all admirable goals. $120,000 is a substantial amount of money to spend on one organization. Have we, the last time we donated to this organization, what was the amount, if we have that data?
So it wasn't a donation. It was $10,000 appropriation. Donations typically go to, I guess, nonprofits. This is something that was started, I believe, by Counselor Lazenby, then Senator Martha Full Clark, as a way to organize interdepartmental response across both the judicial system, the housing, fire, police, intergovernmental affairs, to address something that had, at that point, existed in different silos. So the money at that time was a, was more of a seed grant from the city of Portsmouth to be able to organize this. Thus, or since then, they met through COVID. I think one of their larger achievements was coordinating, I think it was cell phones and securing additional funds for 26 housing units in Rockingham County in order to find transitional housing. And the benefit, at least in my view, of an organization like this that we have started here in the city of Portsmouth is that it does, I think, what many had mentioned in the COVID Response Task Force, is that these problems are interrelated and often find themselves dealing with different departments, both from a housing standpoint, from a justice standpoint. I think there's a few judges, if I can recall, Judge Mayno, I think correctly.
Right, that's right.
On there, all working in concert, and I guess if I am to also remember correctly, this is unlocking matching funds as well from Greater Seacoast Health.
And the Foundation for Seacoast Health.
So the Foundation for Seacoast Health, which shouldn't be the only thing that we consider when, you know, where our dollars are spent, but, you know, for every dollar that we do provide to this organization that we in the city of Portsmouth started, it is matched by another nonprofit in order to double the use of our funds. So to answer your question, 10 grand at first.
Thank you.
Four years ago. This is the mayor.
Your Honor, I'm inclined to support this. I am wondering, have we heard from, or gotten an opinion from our welfare officer? If there, if she would see need in our community and a way to spend that surplus welfare funds outside of this coalition? I would wonder if we have asked Ellen's opinion, and if not, if we could.
Your Honor, we did speak, Ellen and I did speak, and given that part of the mission of the coalition is to find housing for those folks who are struggling to find this kind of housing, this would be an appropriate use of welfare funds? She and I had a conversation about tapping into the surplus funds from the past year and understanding she's got a great surplus again this year. She finds it to be appropriate, and therefore, that's why we recommend it as a funding source.
Thank you. With that knowledge, it's easy for me to support that.
Counselor Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor, and this is why discussions are helpful. When I had asked the question at the last meeting, I had asked about ARPA funding, and having ARPA funding spoken to earlier, and just the verbiage here saying second tranche, I thought ARPA funding, so it makes more sense.
I can see why.
Now. So, and I do remember when this group first started, and Assistant Mayor Lazenby spearheaded this, and since they're not competing for ARPA funding against other groups that are currently working towards this, I'll support this.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Counselor Boo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just mention that, yeah, I think this is a cost that, you know, we would be allocating. The benefit might come back even greater to this community. You know what I mean? Helping out community members that need help, you know, is worth so much more in the long run, and it is a trickle-down effect, you know, where they become contributing citizens. And, yeah, so I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? We will, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right.
Your Honor, the last item we have is a great report spearheaded by Planning Director Beverly Zent, who's with us on Zoom, God love her. There was a whole team of staff that put-
I can confirm it. See her name there?
There was a whole group of staff from different departments that put this end-of-outdoor-dining-season report together, but the upshot of the report is that we wanted your, we wanted you to have an ability and the public to have an ability to review it. They'd like to come back and make a presentation at the December 14th meeting so that we could take the temperature of the council and get a vote that helps inform the permitting process for 2023 as early as possible. That would be the request, if we could schedule the presentation by Beverly for the December 14th meeting. She's obviously here to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Any questions that the council has? Again, thank you for the report. Counselor Tabor?
Just looking forward to that discussion. The streets where we've forced one-way traffic, could we just for the 14th get the number of the traffic counts on those streets? I think it's Pleasant Street and Fleet Street.
Yep. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that we put out surveys to all immediate abutters of outdoor dining establishments. So 559 notices went out, and 123 responses were returned, which is a 23% return rate, which is great. So we got a lot of good data from this effort.
Excellent data. Great.
Thank you, city manager. We've made it miscellaneous. Any comments miscellaneous that we'd like to bring forth, or business unfinished from previous meetings? With that, I want to thank Bryn again, and the entire Rec Department and the police. I thought the Fire Department was a little excessive that they started soaking everybody in Market Square with their fire hose as Santa came through, but it could have been the rain. I don't know. But I appreciate all the effort that went in to that. There's a lot of smiling faces in the crowd, so I appreciate that. And I'd wait a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.